Can everyone hear me okay? Good morning, everyone. It's 9:09 and I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have six members present today, including a new member, Michelle Miller. Everyone say hi to Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
Okay, so we're going to jump right into this. Open session, we've called the meeting to order, we have a quorum. The consent agenda, the commission may request for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for presentation and public comment. Otherwise, the consent agenda will be considered in one vote. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by staff with no opposition received to date. Since some of the items on the consent agenda may require a public hearing, the commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one public hearing. First item is the minutes from April and May meetings. We have conditional uses, there are one, two, three, four, five, six short-term rentals, and I'm going to request that all six of those be pulled and put on the regular agenda, please. And then we have nine subdivision plats that comply with all of the standards. No variances have been requested, no opposition. Does anyone else wish to pull any other items from the consent agenda? Alright, I'm going to open it up for public comment. So, the six short-term rentals are no longer on the consent agenda. It is just the nine subdivision plats. Does anyone wish to speak on any of the nine subdivision plats? Which would be Section C of the consent agenda. Okay, we're open for public comment on the consent agenda. Anyone want to speak? Alright, I'm going to close the consent agenda and take a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda plus the conditional use requests.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda minus the conditional use cases. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. So now, we're going to start with the short-term rentals. I think we should just go through the consent agenda items first that have been pulled. And that'll roll into the regular agenda, so we'll hear all the short-term rentals at once.
And before Zach starts with that, I'll just make a brief comment-
Please.
-of why we put those on the consent agenda. As you may recall, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about, we have a plan to bring back to you some changes to the short-term rental ordinances, partly based on some changes in state law, but also based on some feedback from city council. One of the things that we had talked about was simplifying, streamlining the process for those that did not have any opposition, and for renewals that did not have any complaints, police reports, code enforcement, any of that kind of thing. In fact, and what we had proposed, or what we will be proposing to you all, is making those administrative, so they wouldn't even come to this board. And so, this was sort of an attempt to move in that direction. And so, I guess, just in general, we'd like you to be thinking about that, because that change obviously won't come immediately, but if that causes you some concern, if you'd like to see all short-term rentals, then we'd like to know that. But, again, that's why we put those that did not have any opposition on a separate consent agenda, at least with the idea of having them voted on all at once, rather than going through each individual one.
I've got just a couple of maybe questions or comments about the way that the short-term rentals are presented to us, and I just want to confirm that these items are looked at. But I went back and looked at the short-term rental ordinance. There's a few things that are typically silent in the presentations that we see, so I just want to make sure that, you know, when these are being reviewed, staff goes back and confirms, you know, there's a couple of things. You know, one being operator designated has to be a resident of Tom Green County, and that person has to provide their phone number, and it has to be sent out in the notification to the residents that fall within the radius that's required to be notified. Do we confirm that?
I can't speak to the second one, I might defer to Zach, but on the first part, we do confirm that they have to, after they get approval here, they have to go through a process where they get a certificate of occupancy, which includes building inspections, fire inspections, and so as part of that, we do confirm some of that information. As to what's going out on the notices, I'm not sure.
As well, the study that finance did as well, hence the reason you're seeing, they also confirmed that. Staff did follow back and double, verify with police and fire, and our own verification from the GIS map. However, the only information we have, if the applicant doesn't provide their phone number, is Tom Green County, which is the address in state law. So I will say that-
Which address?
The address that's associated with the property in Tom Green County, or at the Central Presidential District of Tom Green County.
So, I mean, I just want to point out that in the ordinance, it says the application shall designate an operator who must reside in Tom Green County.
An operator. Not necessarily the owner, but an operator. We've got to have someone local that if there's an issue, the city can provide information on the-
Yes.
...addressing the issue.
Yes, when we get the application in and we start working up the project, before we send it out, we confirm that there is a local person, we have their name, their address, and how to contact them, yes.
And is that information, the phone number at least, provided in the notification that goes out to the surrounding properties?
It is not. It was never our, has never been our interpretation that that is supposed to be in the notice that goes out.
I mean, in the number three of the ordinance, it says this information shall be furnished in the notice to the owners of real property as required in Section 201 of the zoning ordinance.
I feel like in past cases that have come, that probably could have alleviated a lot of tension between the owners and the surrounding residents. I mean, we look at the case on Red Bluff East, I believe it was East, maybe it was West, that alone, you know, providing owner contact information in the notice would have probably alleviated a lot of stress and tension around there.
I think that was the thought process in writing the ordinance as well. It sounds like that's probably something we need to address. The second thing I wanted to ask that's typically not mentioned is the street width. That's, it's thirty-foot street width required in front of a short-term rental, and I've not seen that mentioned, I don't know if that's something that we're checking as well.
Luke, that's one of the ones that we addressed many meetings back now, with some of the state court cases that had come up. We thought the street width would not pass muster under those cases, and that's one of the changes that we were going to make in a new ordinance. So, my, our advice to the planning department and to you guys would be to not enforce that provision.
I mean, honestly, that's one of my biggest concerns, especially on some of these lake properties.
Narrow streets.
Yeah, very narrow, and cause, you know, that seems to be the biggest issue that gets caused sometimes. I mean, if that's, state changed that law, there's nothing we can do about it, but, yeah. So, those are my main things I wanted to ask about, I just never heard those addressed in any of these presentations, and I just wanted to make sure that they're being looked at. It sounds like maybe we need to revisit the contact information issue, and as Brittany mentioned, I think that would help in a lot of cases to alleviate some of the concerns by the surrounding residents, if they were able to talk to someone beforehand.
And I would just like to ask, with the thirty-foot width that is in the ordinance, and state having a different opinion, exactly what is the width, or is there a comment or an evaluation on the state level for a width?
So, it's not stat sure, these are court cases-
Okay.
-and basically, and it's been a while since I've looked at it, but they said that you wouldn't treat a normal residential use any different based on the street width, and so you have to have a compelling reason to do that specifically for short-term rentals, and be able to justify why those are different. So, that's kind of our recommendation, why we've said not to enforce it, because we don't have that justification. I don't know whether that was actually considered, you know, when it was adopted.
Okay.
I do, I'm sorry, I've got one more question. Also in the ordinance, I mean, we mentioned that we check with police and fire when these applications come in for renewal. You know, one of the requirements in the ordinance is that there's no outdoor gatherings before 7:00 a.m. or after 10:30. That may not necessarily be a police complaint. Is it possible for the surrounding residents, or what is the suggested method of complaint, I guess, if there is an issue with that, for the neighbors?
If it's after hours, I would most likely suggest the non-emergency police phone number to call in a noise complaint. If not, there's a place on the code enforcement website, it's easy, you just click on it, where do I report, A, and they can report it, and the next business day, code can go out and look at it. The easiest, the fastest way is police.
What's the, what's the parking requirement in the ordinance?
Yeah, two off-street parking spaces plus one additional off-street parking space per separately rented guest room shall be provided.
Separately rented.
That, if you recall, that section of the ordinance applies to short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts.
Okay.
And so, bed and breakfasts can rent individual rooms, and so that's really what that provision of each, you know, short-term rental under the ordinance has to be rented as a whole unit.
Yes.
So, in the case of those, it would be two plus one, so three parking spaces, but with a bed and breakfast, you know, a four-bedroom bed and breakfast would require the two plus four, for each separately rented bedroom.
Okay, and then to go back on your comments, John, about the cases on the consent agenda, I personally, I'd like to see every short-term rental case that comes through in its initial review and discussion. I think it's, I think we need to see every one of the properties that is being considered, we need to debate and discuss, we need to have an opportunity for the community to come in and voice their concerns, if they have any. If it's a renewal, and you guys could maybe put in these summary notes, you know, the compliance with code enforcement and city issues, that there aren't any reports or problems with these properties, as part of the staff report documentation, I think it would really make me feel a little bit better.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, so on that note, we're going to read in the first one, CU 2315, 221 North Oxford Drive. A request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 221 North Oxford Drive.
Okay, as you mentioned, all the reasons for these, this was on consent, it is a renewal, this is part of the process of, I believe, one of the cases that got notification to come in and address, and correct, and renew their application. As you can see here, they have the required parking, per the ordinance, it's zoned, single family, SMD 5, Karen Hesse Smith, it's in the bluffs, picture of the front of the home.
That picture's wrong. The aerial picture. That one's wrong.
Oh, okay.
The picture of the house may be correct, I cannot, yeah, that looks the same as what's on the staff notes here. The aerial shot's not right.
Okay. My apologies. Okay. Staff recommendations for approval, maintain all the off-street parking on the premises, obtain certificate of occupancy based on, again, with permits and inspections, and obtain and maintain compliance with the annual inspections of the Fire Department's office. There's a note there that basically says they shall receive approvals for any more renewals, new cases if they were to ever expire, let it expire, et cetera. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for the staff? Alright, thank you, Zach. We're going to open it up for public comment. This is 221 North Oxford. Does anyone wish to speak on this case? If so, please come forward, state your name and single-member district, or single-member district. Alright, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion, or thoughts from my colleagues here.
Being College Hills, not the bluffs.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. Alright, the next one is CU 2316, 1410 South Park. A request for a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 1410 South Park Street.
Zach Rambo, Planning and Development Services, again, a request for a short-term rental, property zoned, single-family, District 5, Karen Hesse Smith, the Santa Rita neighborhood. Twenty-three notices were mailed out, none in favor and none in opposition, hence the reason it had been on consent. Picture of the mail-in map in the aerial there. Staff recommendations for approval of the conditional use, again, same conditions as prior, the parking, certificate of occupancy, fire inspection, and maintain compliance with the ordinance. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Alright, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district.
Good morning, members of the commission, my name is H.R. Wardlaw III. I reside at 1201 South Park, it's in single-member District 5, and I'd like to hand out a map. I'm in opposition to this particular property, and actually two others, and we might talk about two at the same time. So what do we have, six commissioners here? So I have an extra one. So I've got a map here, I want you to follow in my presentation, and it applies to three of the cases that are coming up, item number two on the consent agenda, item number two on the regular agenda, and then the other one has to do with Santa Rita School, Elementary School, and I think it's number four over there. But anyway, I've lived in Santa Rita more than seventy years, and I know all the properties over there, and I've been in the real estate business all my life, as some of you know, and anyway, it's my position in opposition to these three. Single-family, short-term rentals really do not belong in single-family residential neighborhoods, and that's my position, and that's pretty logical, I know reasonable people can differ about things, but why would you put fifteen, every month, fifteen more of these in a single-family residential neighborhood? It just makes no sense. It's, you've reached a saturation point, and then the neighborhood just starts going downhill, and any appraiser will tell you that. In fact, there's even a term for it in the real estate business, it's called downzoning, where you just, these are many hotels, and the problem you have, if we want to get into my presentation, is that the people coming to stay in these are unknown, they're unvetted, and they're going to be here today and gone tomorrow. So, the opposition I have to just these three, and of course, Santa Rita Elementary School is the worst, and we'll talk about that, I guess, in a minute, but the other one, if you look at my map there, and you'll see the red ones on the right, lower right-hand side, that's Claudius Daycare, and then Gingerbread House in the block over next to it, and then just south of that is this property, number two, and it's one block from Claudius, the other one over there is one block from the Gingerbread House, and all those are right there in a little cluster right there together, and then, of course, the one over by Santa Rita on South Jefferson Street, and all these are just clumped in here together. And who's going to get up here and tell me that we need these three right there when they're a bunch of scattered all over? And I just don't think we want to do this to our children, ladies and gentlemen. They can get these, they can live somewhere else if they want to, and we wouldn't want to ever take the risk of having problems with our kids, our grandkids, and, you know, we'd all have to live with that, and I just, I just don't think there's a good reason to approve any of this. I will point out also, I don't know if you've heard, last week, Dallas, Texas did away with short-term rentals and single-family residential housing, and some of the other towns are doing it too, it just doesn't work real good. And I will also point out that we've got a number of other short-term rentals already in Santa Rita, and based on what I've seen in Karen Hesse Smith, our councilwoman has seen, they're not being used very often, so why do we just keep on putting more in without any showing of need? So, I guess those are my main concerns, if anybody else has a question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Mr. Wardlaw, I think you've raised a legitimate and very important concern about short-term rentals. I agree with you, we don't want them across the street from schools or close to daycares. I don't know of a process, I don't think it exists, where these websites that are being used for short-term rentals are vetting the customers that are staying in these units. And you're right, to a point, they do operate like a hotel or a motel. So, thank you for raising your concerns.
Yeah, I'll just make one or two additional points. Number one, for those of you who didn't see the last city council meeting, I would urge you to look at it. The city council is very much concerned about the avalanche of all of these things that are coming up, look, just on this one month, fifteen.
Yeah.
Seven of those are in Santa Rita.
Well, and to your point, Winkie, the, there's a letter, a cover letter here on the staff notes that talks about them being on the consent agenda, it's not in this note. I think the staff could maybe speak to this, there was a, I believe there was a letter sent out by the Finance Department from the city to all of the short-term rental properties that are not registered with the city, do not have permits, urging them to come into compliance. John, could you speak to that, please?
Yes, that's right, that's the reason we typically don't see fifteen in a month, but the Finance Department, working with the Planning Department, did an audit of short-term rentals that are listed on sites like Airbnb, the RBO, and that audit showed a number of properties that were operating without getting the conditional use through the city and without paying hotel taxes, and so a letter went out to all of those operators saying, hey, you need to come into compliance. And so, one of the reasons we've seen so many this month are a number of those properties are trying to come into compliance now. I don't expect we'll see, we may see another month or two of a number of these, then it should taper off back to a more normal.
So one last point, if it's alright with the Planning Commission, I won't make the same argument on number two, on the regular agenda, if that's alright, but I would like to reserve the right to come back and talk to you about Santa Rita Elementary School, where I went to school back in the 40s. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is my first time ever to come down here, my name is James Kaywet, I live at 1417 West Avenue D, and I don't know what district it is, I didn't know I needed that information.
No, no, no.
It's the same as other gentleman.
Your address is plenty good.
Okay, look, I'm talking about number four, which is the same neighborhood the gentleman standing up before me, and I have pretty much the same opposition to a single-family being turned into a one-time rental thing. I've used those before, and they've always been outside of a city, and I have no problem with that. If you've got two or three acres, and that's what you want to do, that's your property, do it. But I live in Santa Rita-
Yes, sir.
-and there's two backbones of this real country, and it's a husband and wife family and a single-family ownership, and this council, by putting these in here, is working to destroy one of these, because that's all it's going to be useful, I feel, I'm not entirely 100% sure, it'll be useful for party things. People come, they have a good time, and they leave, they don't really care what they leave behind, that's just the way it is, that's human nature, the human condition, the way it is. I feel the same way the gentleman does that spoke before me about the elementary school. We don't know who's coming in, who they're renting it to-
Yes, sir.
-I don't know who they have to show any identification to, I'm sure the homeowner or whoever's managing it, but hotel, they have some kind of recognition of who that person is and who's responsible for it. I just think it's a very bad deal for San Angelo overall, and entire city, to be renting these things like this, put more and more of them up, we have hotels, let them stay in a hotel, just like I do when I go to the city. If I don't do one of these, I do them, like I said, but it's outside neighborhoods. I think a single-family neighborhood should remain a single-family neighborhood, and actually, one I came on was number four, I guess-
Yes, sir.
-the one on South Jefferson.
Yes, sir.
I live on, I live from this house-
Hey Travis, since we're on number two, or number one, we probably need to call that case if we're going to have-
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you for your point.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good morning, commissioners, Chairperson Stripling, Karen Hesse Smith, single-member District 5. I'd like to add my support to the statements made by the prior two speakers, and I also have two questions for the staff. Per the map that Mr. Wardlaw passed out to all of you, you see the two, the two properties, the smaller ones, not across from Santa Rita School, but the other two, isn't there a provision of within 500 feet, no second STR may be allowed?
That's correct, and that's one of the first things we do when we get a new application, is do those measurements to ensure that there are not, I don't know the exact distance between those two green, but we do check those to ensure that they're not within 500 feet.
So you're confirming they are not within 500 feet of one another? The two proposed.
Well, and Zach just pointed out, yes, the ones that we have already been approved are ones that are requesting approval, we do measure those, and so those two are in excess of 500 feet apart. One thing we don't know is if there are ones that are operating outside of, you know, approvals. But then, if those were to come in later, and somebody else has already gotten in and gotten approved, then the newer one that comes in would not-
Would not be approved. Thank you for clarifying, it's just based on the size of a typical residential lot in this neighborhood, it looks unlikely that that would pass. And my second question, per one of the comments the gentleman, the gentleman before me made- And my second question, per one of the comments the gentleman, the gentleman before me made, I think rather than going on at length about my opinion, whether it's pro or con for STRs, I think it might be pertinent for the staff to produce a density map for the city of San Angelo, so that we can see where the abundance of STRs are, perhaps even where they're being requested. And I think it would also be of great interest to find out the occupancy rates for those properties by neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
I'm William Thorpe. I'm the owner-operator of 1410 South Park, and as a rebuttal, I'd just like to say, as far as occupancy, I'm at 85% occupancy over the course of the last year. The reason I've switched to STR as opposed to long-term tenancy is damage and having to remodel every time somebody moves out. STR provides the ability to have more control over the property. You can say no to somebody coming in and out. And as far as what he was saying about background checks, Airbnb runs background checks. I've had a recent issue where somebody tried to book, and they had an assault in high school, and it kicked them back. So, excuse me, I doubt hotels run that kind of background.
Thank you.
And as far as the kid thing, again, back to the background check, they run background checks. In Santa Rita alone, there's like five, six offenders, and none of them stay in my place. So, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and leave it up for my colleagues to share their opinions or make a motion. I think, I'll start. I think Mr. Wardlaw has raised concern about short-term rentals that we haven't addressed at this point, but that I do agree with, that it is legitimate, and it's, having short-term rentals close to daycares and schools, I don't think is a good idea. So, those are my thoughts. Anyone else want to share their thoughts?
I'm just a little curious for the gentleman that spoke earlier that this is his property. Can you talk to me a little bit more about, I'm sorry, I don't know where you went, but about the process for background checks? The first I've heard of that.
I don't know the process specifically. I'm sorry.
Yeah, come on up, please.
I don't know the process specifically, but when you sign up for Airbnb, you have to give them your ID, a picture of your ID, a number of different information, and then they run a background check initially, because that's what they did. For mine, years ago, when I used it, when I traveled or whatever, and that's what I'm getting at, this guy had signed up a couple of years ago, I guess, and then when he went to book, they further pursued his background.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I give a rebuttal?
Sure. I'm going to open up public comment. Mr. Wardlaw, come on up.
That's a very good question, and I will answer it. I forgot to tell you, I've been in the apartment rental business for over 30 years, and I own a lot of apartments in town. It's not required under Texas law to run a criminal background check on these people. You know, your upstanding apartments and operators do run criminal background checks, but a lot of people don't. And that's where, that's where the rub comes in, you know, because there's no requirement under the law, and you have to charge, you know, you have to charge for that criminal background check. And a lot of people just don't do it. And the fact that this gentleman does, as he owns it right now, that's great, but, you know, if they sell the property tomorrow, it's just, it's just too risky, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to point out that he's also over the 500 feet from my home as well, but also, as far as who's staying there.
Yes.
95% are people visiting, people from the base or family in Santa Rita.
Okay. Thank you. Still have public comment open.
Larry Miller, council member for SMD 6. That's fine, well and good. Somebody contacts Airbnb and says they want this house, even if they run a background check on them. But what about all those other people that are coming in there that may not even be, Airbnb might not even know who they are?
Yes, sir.
So, you might have a good background check on the individual that's setting it up, but who's he bringing in, and how is that checked?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm confused. What people?
The other occupants.
Family members, et cetera, of the renter.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment again.
Before you make a motion, I just, for all of these cases, just want to remind you that we do have an ordinance that's been adopted by the city council that regulates short-term rentals. It does make it a discretionary decision by you all whether to approve or not, but it does need to be individualized to each property. So, I know some of the speakers have spoken generally against short-term rentals, but generally, we have decided as a city to allow them. And so, any denial of any one of these should be based on an individualized determination of that particular property being inappropriate, rather than them being inappropriate in single-family neighborhoods altogether, because that decision's already been made by the council.
Yeah, I'm going to go a little bit further. We have a lot of short-term rental cases on this month's agenda, so I was a part of the Planning Commission when this was initially debated and discussed by the Planning Commission years ago. And it is a hotly debated issue. There's strong opinions in favor and against. And I think personally, what I settled on, and the reason that I think short-term rentals in some areas are okay, is I look at the alternative as a long-term rental. And I've seen long-term rentals throughout this community, and Santa Rita especially. I live in Santa Rita. I know these properties very well. And to the gentleman's point, it's this case we're talking about. He talked about the frequency that he has access to his property in a short-term rental. If you have a long-term rental, the owner may not see that property for months. They may not make access into that property for a very long time. And the wear and tear on the improvements could be significant. The activities within those residents can be, can be very detrimental and dangerous. So, short-term rentals, you know, if you don't maintain the property in a good standard, if it's not appealing, it's not going to rent. Someone's not going to pay for it if it's not a well-maintained, nice-looking property. I think that has value personally. If I'm looking at my neighborhood, and there's a long-term rental that's got worn-out siding and paint that's needed on the exterior, and weeds that are two feet tall in the front yard, you know, I don't like that. I don't think anyone likes that. And I feel like if it's a short-term rental, and they're not going to be able to rent that unit if it looks like that, so they're going to have to go in and clean it up and maintain it to a higher standard, one that I think we would all want for our neighborhood homes. So, that's it. Just wanted everyone to know that there's been a lot of debate and discussion about this, and I don't think that we've got this perfect and right. But I do think that the permit process, the process that these applicants go through to have a short-term rental approved, the fact that it's a one-year permit when it's initially approved, and then two years thereafter, these are all measures that were carefully considered and adopted by this Planning Commission to bring regulation into this, into this form of use to protect the community. And I think the ordinance, by and large, has done a good job. We don't have a lot of folks coming in to renew a short-term rental where we've got a dozen property owners standing in the crowd saying, this one's been terrible. We've had trash cans thrown in our yard, you know, all the stories that we've heard about the concerns about short-term rentals, and the reality, I can't name a case where we've had a renewal come up, and there's been police reports or code compliance issues. So, I just want, I want everyone to know and understand what we're dealing with. So, anyone else want to share their thoughts?
Well, I too have thoughts about short-term rentals. I was on the council-approved committee at the time this was even discussed, and we spent nearly a year putting together ideas and thoughts from other communities, and some testimony from individuals, homeowners from across the city, Lake Nazworthy, and brought a plan back known as the Short-Term Rental Proposal to the Planning Commission. So, there was two vetted things back then, committee and then this commission. Is it perfect? Maybe not. Does it need to be relooked at on a few individual points? I made that comment to the mayor after the last city council meeting. So, as Travis has said, we have a process. We have an approved council agenda for short-term rentals, and other than really a bad situation or an area that a short-term rental just doesn't make sense in, we have our guidelines.
Thank you.
I think, I'll just kind of echo the comments that Travis and Candy have both made. And I feel like there's a lot of misconception about what STRs are, and misunderstanding or lack of, I don't know, information available to the general public whenever they find out that there is an STR coming, you know, to their neighborhood or nearby, as far as what is required of the owner, operator, and what their recourse is really in trying to combat potentially bad situation if there is a bad operator. I think there's also an economic incentive for the operator to maintain the property in order to keep it rented, as opposed to a traditional long-term rental where if you get a bad tenant, the eviction process can be lengthy and difficult. Just by their nature, short-term rentals turnover very frequently, as well as with all the other provisions in the ordinance that we have to hold the owner accountable.
Now, having said all of that, I share the same concern that Mr. Wardlaw does about these, this specific case. So, we've outlined our general thoughts on short-term rentals, but I think we need to address this case specifically. So, does anyone want to make a motion?
You know, based on, you know, what was said about the requirements from city council, based on, you know, the needs of the community, I'm in favor of approving this, as stated by, you know, by staff. I recognize that there are a lot of individuals that sometimes don't like it, but what we don't have is those that do as well. So, I'll make a motion to approve as presented, as long as they meet the staff recommendation conditions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, 5-1 to approve.
Okay, Zach Rainbow, Plankton Development Services, again, another short.
Zach, I'm going to need to read this one in before you go.
I'm sorry. I'm not bad.
So, this is item three, CU 2321, 2802 Houston Street, a request for conditional use for a short-term rental located at 2802 Houston Street.
Okay. Zach Rainbow, again, as you said, it is a conditional use for a short-term rental at 2802 Houston Street, zoned residential, single-family, one, District Two, Tom Thompson, Bluffs neighborhood. Public notification, received no responses back. Is it wrong again?
This is not the Bluffs. It's just the wrong neighborhood. The map's correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, I apologize. When they got pulled off, we threw these together last second, so. Okay, staff recommendation, they meet all the conditions necessary to recommend approval. However, there's conditions, maintain those parking spaces, obtain a CO, yearly inspection by the fire department and inspections office, and maintain the proper protocol and approvals by the Planning Commission. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion or comments.
Move to approve as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? To approve, 6-0. Item four, CU 23-22, 1910 Juanita Avenue, request for conditional use for a short-term rental located at 1910 Juanita Avenue.
Zach Rainbow, Plankton Development Services, this is CU 23-22, 1910 Juanita Avenue, again, a short-term rental, zoned, single-family, Tom Thompson, District Two, it's the Angelo Heights neighborhood, and I hope. Okay, 22.
That's right. Angelo Heights isn't right, but the map's correct. It's a little north of Angelo Heights.
Sorry. The first picture's wrong.
I apologize. That, okay, 22 notices mailed out, none in favor and none in opposition. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use, again, the three conditions of approval, and the note that they maintain the rules and regulations required by the approvals of Planning Commission. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Zach. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Number five, conditional use 2324, 1909 Forest Park, request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 1909 Forest Park.
Zach Rainbow, again, Plankton Development Services, request is 1909 Forest Park, as you mentioned, approval of a short-term rental, RS1 zoning, Tom Thompson. I'm guessing it's wrong. 22 notices were mailed out, none in favor, none in opposition. Staff is recommending approval, again, the same three conditions, as well as the note, receive proper approval with the conditions required by Planning Commission. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, thank you, Zach. Going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district. All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion, please. and take thoughts or a motion, please. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. CU 2326, 102 West Avenue I, RS2 zoning, a request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 102 West Avenue I.
Okay, Zach Rainbow, playing in Development Services, again, a request for a short-term rental. This one is zoned, two-family residential, District Three, Harry Thompson, Fort Concho neighborhood, some pictures of the home. Did it send up public notification? Did not receive any responses. Is this one right or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Staff is recommending approval, again, the same three conditions, the parking, certificate of occupancy, maintain the annual inspections of the fire department, and receive proper approvals by the Planning Commission. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward. All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero. All right. Regular agenda. Conditional uses, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the city council. Item one, 2314, this is 2536 Colorado Avenue, request for approval of a conditional use to allow short-term rental in the single-family residential zoning district located at 2536 Colorado Avenue.
Good morning, Planning Commissioner, Sherry Bailey, Senior Planner. As you indicated, this is CU 2314, 2536 Colorado Avenue, and it is a request for a short-term rental. The zoning is RS1, it is in District Five, Karen Hesse-Smith's district, and it is in the Santa Rita neighborhood. There were 21 notices that were mailed out. We had zero in favor. We did have three in opposition on this piece of property. In looking at it and in examining the number of oppositions, the number of people that were noticed, and the fact that all of the oppositions, there were no comments made, they just checked that they were opposed, staff is recommending approval with the three conditions before you, to maintain the off-street parking, to obtain a certificate of occupancy, from permits and inspections, and to obtain and comply with the annual fire inspection. Are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Sherry. I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
I didn't have, is this a renewal or new?
I don't, I will look at the staff report, it wasn't mine, let me look.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ray Bishop. I'm speaking on behalf of my son who lives at 2525 Colorado and who did oppose. I don't know that you all have a copy. I did make a copy of his email that he sent in. We, my wife and I owned that property up until a couple of years ago in our name, and we have transferred it to our son. He is not able to come today because he is a senior instructor for, for summer school at TLCA. I might also proudly announce that he is Teacher of the Year for TLCA, has won the award for quarterly Teacher of the Year many times, and they have also submitted him as a national candidate for Teacher of the Year. So-
Wonderful. Congratulations.
I'm being a little bit of a proud guy here, okay? We purchased that property in 2008. There is a lot of rental property in that area. There has been a multitude of problems from time to time in that area. The police have been out. There have been drug problems, of course, a lot of traffic, a lot of noise. There's been some other, shall I say, rather illegal activities in some of the areas around there. I won't go into that, but I'll let you decide on your own. Our son maintains his place and, if I may say so, some even in other neighborhoods, neighborhood places because of elderly people who unable to take care of their places, and he does not do it for pay. In fact, one day he came, one day a fella came home and asked him what he was doing, and he said, "Well, I didn't think anybody lived here, so I'm mowing your yard." My point is, we are definitely opposed to any more short-term rentals in that area, and would appreciate the commission's consideration on that and not approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Laura Stamps. I live on 2541 Colorado, and my neighborhood is now being saturated with these rentals. There's probably six homeowners on that street. We do deal with a lot of traffic, a lot of noise. They've been unsavorable, some of them. We've had some really nice rental people that have moved into the neighborhood, but I think at this point, it's too saturated.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Larry Kerr. I'm in, I guess that's District Five. My property is located at 2530 Colorado. It's exactly next door to the STR in question, and I had a few issues going in as far as, one is reduced property values, and I know they've got a lot of data out that says that doesn't pertain, but I don't think that's correct because y'all will all agree with me. Deep down inside, if you had a house you were looking at to buy for your personal residence, and there was an STR next door and you knew about it, chances are, you would move on. And I mean, you can say what you want to, but we know how people feel. There's no way personally that I would buy my personal residence next door to an STR. Therefore, it's decreasing your property value and it makes it longer to sell. We're moving in that. Then with the STRs, you've got a revolving door of strangers coming through there all the time, and they say they're not vetted and stuff, and they talk about that, and they say it's just like a motel in a hotel. The difference between that motel and a STR is you've got onsite supervision in a motel. You do not have it in a STR. And they were talking about the noise issues coming in and making the police report the next day. Well, that's, that's exercising futility. I mean, the guys have sobered up, the party's over, there's no noise when they go over there. And we're so short-staffed in the SAPD, it's ridiculous to make them running all over town for these when it's senseless. I mean, you can stop this. It's very easy to stop. Okay, another thing that I have an issue with is these outlaw STRs. Okay, you're ringing, you're talking about we've got a rush on them right now wanting permits and stuff. What's the penalty? I mean, they've evaded hotel motel taxes all this time. They've been operating outside the law. I mean, if you break the law, you ought to be penalized, end of story. I mean, you shouldn't reward them by letting them come in here just like everybody else and give them a STR. Penalize them, kick them out for two years where they can't get a penalty, or fine them the hotel tax going back through the Airbnb where they can look back and see where it's been rented, because I'm sure you can probably find that. The stats are probably in there if you've got the ability, which I don't, to look that up. Of course, you have issues with, we've already talked about this, I won't go through a whole lot of it. We have issues, there's possible issues with noise, traffic, trash, different people coming in and out, you know, and it serves a need to some extent with like weddings, rodeos, party, athletic events, bachelor parties, but they shouldn't be a party house, and a lot of times they turn into that, and they end up in the backyard. Like my particular property has chain link fence. I mean, if you've got a party going on here and you've got a house here in a chain link fence, there's no suppression there. There's none at all. It's, it's not, you know, it doesn't stop it at all. Okay. And then also, I think by adding the STRs, you're reducing the number of long-term rentals in the neighborhood, in the, in the city, therefore reducing the supply of them, the price is going up, and the lower-income people, you're penalized, just like always, the poor is getting penalized, because the prices of rentals are going up if the supply diminishes. So by adding more STRs, you're losing your basis for, I'm sorry, you're losing your amount of long-term rentals. And I think-
Mr. Chair, that was the three-minute timer, just so you know.
Thank you.
Nobody told me that.
[laughing]
Okay, well, I'm not through. Do I need to quit now?
No, sir. If you have any other comments, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, one thing that's, that's a perfect advertisement is the mayor is opposed to these.
Okay.
So that's, that's one thing right there, and it compromised the integrity of the neighborhood and gives the community a motel atmosphere. And therefore, I wish you would vote against the STR at 2536 Colorado. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
My name is Carolina Jeda Flores. I am the property owner of 2536 Colorado, and I've been a resident in Tom Green's San Angelo for 10 years only. I have family, I have two little girls. I'm raising my family here in San Angelo, and it's only been 10 years, but I, I hope and I plan to stay here for longer, hopefully have grandbabies raised here in San Angelo. So, I am concerned for our community. If I were to think that having a short-term lease specifically with the company Airbnb was a hazard to the future of this community where, again, I'm raising my two little girls, I would not have looked into this type of business. So this property is, we just purchased it, it's never been used as a short-term lease. As you had mentioned, in Airbnb, it is, image is everything. This, our families are coming, let's say, out of Lovac for a sports competition, and, you know, the only information that they have on the property where they're gonna stay with their kids is the pictures that we're showing them. So, definitely keeping the landscape, keeping the home in excellent condition is a thing that we try to get through Airbnb and through our short-term lease, same for the inside. Now with Airbnb, I feel indeed, it's a new, relatively new thing, and I keep saying Airbnb because that is the company that we plan on using. Why? Because of how just evolving it had been in regards to screening people before us approving who's gonna stay at our home. It's, I've been an Airbnb user and I travel with my family for the last eight years using them, and I feel it has allowed for us to be able to visit certain places where the cost of the hotels were too expensive. On other properties, we've seen, especially for San Angelo, you know, they, part of the, us approving, if we want that person or family to stay, is giving us the reason why they're visiting our town. And the reasons have been, again, my kid has a sport match, so we're gonna be there, taking my dad to fish at the lake. There was another family that the dad was gonna have open heart surgery at Shannon, so the family needed to stay close by. Talking to friends at work, they've asked, "Well, how much are you charging for the property?" And our value is less than what the local hotels are offering. So it is easier for families to travel and be able to stay and enjoy our town or get medical care through Airbnb. So I think that's one of the strengths of having this type of properties. The other thing is, it depends on me, who I get to approve to stay at my home, not just any random person can stay. There's a background. Airbnb is highly based on your review. So, other people that had stayed at other Airbnbs, those owners gave that person a review, and it's not just based on, "Oh, I wanna, you know, make a good impression on you. You give me a good review, I give you a bad review." This is a hidden review. So until I don't provide an actual honest review, I won't get to see the other person's review. So it's really blinded. So there's, there's a little bit more than just, you know, getting random people to stay at your property. With that being said, I agree, it's a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. Our intention and plan is to keep the standards that we have, where we actually screen and not just, you know, approve anybody to stay at this home. I think it's a good idea to allow the neighbors to keep our personal contact information. I will not mind at all, if there's any issues with any renter, for them to call me directly and tell me, you know what, somebody arrived and we're having this problem. I think that, that's a great idea, and, and yes, that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question and a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
This property is really close to the university, and we've had issues with rentals with a bunch of kids coming in and parties, like you've, like you've heard. And another question, when did residential areas become commercial?
Okay.
Why are we making money? Why is my neighbor running a business when I'm trying to raise a kid? I just have, I just wanna know. Is that okay? I mean, are we okay with that?
I don't know how to answer that, I'm sorry.
I know, thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take a motion or thoughts.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
We have two opposed and four in favor. So four-two.
That's my staff question.
Yes, absolutely. Go right ahead.
So, obviously, this is a huge debate, and with us trying to legalize some of the STRs that were operating outside of the guidelines, has the city looked at any, there's multiple resources other than just getting on Airbnb to see what properties are functioning legally. There's a site, for instance, called AirDNA that you can actually pay for the subscription for the area of San Angelo, and within that site, you can actually see all operating units, what their, their rent rates are, what their occupancy percentage is, and I think that if we're not utilizing that as the city, we definitely need to, because I think it would address some of the saturation questions that have been addressed today.
Yes, in fact, the, the city worked with a consultant that that's what they do is audits for cities for short-term rentals, and so they use all of those resources. In fact, I think they have access to resources that aren't available to the general public in order to create those lists of operating short-term rentals. So I think we're pretty confident that that list is a comprehensive list of currently operating STRs.
Okay, so is that something that we'll be able to see going forward? Again, because there was questions posed to the staff on what the occupancy rates are, what the saturation of Santa Rita, for say, or the Bluffs, or Bentwood, whatever the case might be, and I do think that's crucial information for the Planning Commission to make some of these decisions, not just based on this Airbnb is 500 feet from this Airbnb. I think that we do need to know Santa Rita has X amount of Airbnbs currently operating. I mean, I do think that that's a valid point of information that needs to be presented to us.
We'll have to look and see that. We'll have to look and see that. That audit was run by the finance department, so we'll have to look and see what exact information they have. All that we have at this point is the list of approved short-term rentals. We have a map of that, and it may be on our website. If it's not, it will be soon, but I think it is already up live.
Yeah, the GIS COSA, you can actually-
Now, it would not show, it would not show those that are operating without a conditional use approval.
Sure.
But as I said, we do have a list of those, and letters have gone out to all of those operating. I'll have to see what information is available with that, and what can be made public out of that.
Just to clarify, when you say audit, that's just a one-time?
It was a one-time audit. I believe there's an intention to follow up on that periodically.
Because I heard what Brittany is saying is, that's pertinent information when people are asking about occupancy and saturation. We can't answer those questions if we don't have that information. So I think that's a really valuable piece of information that this commission needs prior to any kind of approvals.
Something else that I think is important to understand is, if these applicants are coming in with a new property, new conversion, or if they've been operating for a period of time without a permit, I'd like to know the nature of the request.
In that same context, one of the residents' last case had a good point, or good question. What is the penalty for non-compliance? And I'm glad that we're enforcing it, now that we're discovering these that have not been operating in compliance with the ordinance, but what's the incentive for people to come forward, other than doing the right thing?
Yeah. So there is a penalty and interest provision in the hotel occupancy tax ordinance in both locally and in the state law.
Right.
And so I think it's 15% penalty on, you know, whatever was unpaid, and then interest is like 12% per year, so.
Okay.
So, one of the, is there a way that we could see a map whenever these are presented as to the saturation level in that area? You know, I've heard it several times now that there are many in the area, but I don't think I have a definition of what many is. Is there two in the area, or is there 20 in the area?
That's something that we can add to the slides. As I mentioned, the GIS site does now, which it didn't for a very long time, it does now have a drop-down option, that you are able to look at the neighborhood, but it would be extremely helpful, whether it's in our staff notes, or on the slide in general. I think for the public as well.
Yeah, sorry.
We can definitely add that for future meetings. I believe for this one, we actually created a map for ourselves that showed all of the current requests.
Yeah, that's just this meeting, right? That's all the cases that are presented in this.
Correct. So I don't know if that actually shows all of the other previously approved ones and their relationship to these, but that's something that we can provide for in future meetings.
Yeah, what I'd like to see is the map that was presented by one of the presenters. This one did very clearly show where they were, and the intent. That would be very helpful. I know that would make, that would influence my decision if there's 10 in the area already. But what I see is, it looks like the only one in the area, based on the information that's being presented. But I thought this map was very helpful in being able to determine how many actually are there. Are we oversaturated?
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
I have one more question, and I'm new here, so forgive me if this is something that everyone knows, and I don't. But we've talked a lot about, you know, complaints to SAPD, or complaints. So my question is, I think one of the gentlemen who spoke up just a second ago mentioned, you know, that SAPD is busy, and I appreciate his point that you don't necessarily always want to call in a noise complaint, because A, that keeps you up longer, right? And two, you hate to bother the police department that's already busy on something like that. So my question is, I know you mentioned like a website, and there's a place to make a complaint, but where are the, I mean, how are people notified of where to make a complaint, and where are those stored, just for purposes that are maybe outside the police department? I think Luke even mentioned that earlier, that we have a better idea of what the complaints are, because it sounds like a lot of these residents are having issues within their neighborhoods. But just like me, I probably wouldn't call the police for something like that.
I don't, first of all, we don't send out any notices or notifications of here's who you call, but there are basically three options, at least that I can think of. One is the police, if there's what I would call an emergency type, or you want something handled like that evening, you would probably need to call the police. If you didn't want to call the police, or if it was something that you think could wait, then you could contact our code compliance division, either through the website, or calling the code compliance office, and they would open a complaint and research it. You can also call the planning department. We process these conditional uses. If we get calls about a short-term rental, we will document that as well. And then when a future renewal comes up, we check our records, we check code compliance records, and police records, all three, to see if there are any, have been any complaints over the previous year or two years, depending on the renewal period. So those would be the three options.
I do feel like, you know, just, you know, in the very beginning of this meeting, we talked about what Luke brought up as far as owner contact information not being provided. And I don't know if there's a way, upon approval, to make sure that the owner of the STR is providing information to the neighborhood. But I do think, as the public, I don't think that there's enough known resources of who to contact, or how to get ahold of those people. I mean, does the general public know to call the non-emergency 911, or that they can reach out to somebody in the planning department? I don't think most people do know that. And I think that if that's something that would ease the neighbors' concerns, I think that that's something that we either make a requirement, or request that applicants provide.
Well, and if nothing else, I would assume it would be easy enough to, whenever notice is sent regarding the property, or if there's notice regarding the approval of the property, toss in that information to the neighborhoods, so the neighbors know this is where your resource is.
That's, yeah, that's actually-
Before relying on complaints-
That's actually written in the ordinance.
We need, I mean, people need to know where to make a complaint, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. The next case is CU 2317, 621 West Avenue J. Request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 621 West Avenue J.
This is actually a first-time rental request, and one of our other planners was handling this, and she talked with me for quite a while about the fact, as you know, there are two parking spaces that are required. He does have, this owner does have two areas that are paved for parking, but the area that he is proposing to do is not presently paved. He does know that he is going to have to pave that, and he cannot operate as a short-term rental until he meets that requirement. And we included this slide for you, so that you can see that, and know that we're aware of it, and that he is going to come into compliance if he's approved. We sent out 22 notices. We had one in favor, zero in opposition.
It's like two in opposition.
Pardon, I'm two, excuse me, two in opposition. And I believe those show on the map.
Do you have any comments from those oppositions, or?
I can share that with you.
Okay. Thank you. Give us just one second. Is there anything else, Ms. Bailey?
No.
Thank you.
This is our normal.
All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Please come on forward, sir.
Good morning. My name is Robert Miller. I own the property, which is on the map, designated as parcel 37790. I did submit an opposition to this short-term rental. One thing I'd like to point out is that there's a daycare center across the street from my property, and up, I think, two lots.
Okay.
And I've heard here today that some people are in opposition to short-term rentals in proximity to daycare centers.
Yes, sir.
My wife and I built this home about four years ago. The address is 1324 Austin. Obviously, I'm speaking in opposition to the change. There is several issues. One is, one is, there's a parking problem in the area already. The, I have a question, and I don't mean to sound ignorant here, but there's a difference between the hotel tax and the short-term rental tax, correct?
No. Under state law, short-term rentals pay a hotel tax, the same as a hotel. And so in that respect, there's no difference.
Okay, thank you. As she pointed out here a few minutes ago, the off-street parking is not, is not paved. I had some opportunity to talk with some of the neighbors in the area, and someone expressed that they thought they were already operating as a short-term rental at that location. Is that location, is this location on J Street on your list for short-term violation?
Do you know, Sherri? It's, yeah, we do not have that list of all of the ones that were sent out to-
I'm just going, it's hearsay, okay? I feel, to some degree, like I've been criticized here, because I do own a number of long-term rental properties here in San Angelo. My wife and I moved to San Angelo about four, about four years ago, and we pride ourselves in being good landlords. We actually have a professional management company that takes care of our management of our properties. A question I have, and I don't see it, I tried to do some research with regard to the ordinance here in San Angelo. How does Americans with disabilities act and impact to short-term rentals? I know if you go to hotel, talk to the people at the hotel managers, they have to have a certain percentage of rooms that are available, that people ask for accommodation. And the research that I've done here with regard to short-term in San Angelo, I see no mention.
It's a great question.
I'm sorry?
That's a great question.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't mean to sound like I'm old, but I'm 80 years, I'm 80 years old.
Well, I know from, I know from the, from my commercial experience, I think you have to have a tax inspection whenever, whenever there's a commercial property that's going for occupancy. Is that accurate, John? Do we require that?
Well, yes, but again, under, under some of the provisions that Brandon mentioned in terms of court cases, these are not commercial. They do act similar to hotels, but under our ordinance and under state law, these are considered residential uses. They just happen to rent for a shorter period of time. You know, if they're more than 30 days, they're a long-term rental. If they're less than 30 days, they're a short-term rental. But they're still considered a residential use of the property.
Brandon, this gentleman was asking about ADA compliance with short-term rentals. Just so you're up to speed.
So, yeah, I had a lull on that. SERS in general are hotly being litigated right now, so nothing's certain at this point. But I think they are being looked at as far as whether they're like a lodging, like a hotel or motel. And so there is some criteria where ADA would apply. I think there's also some exceptions, like if you have less than five bedrooms, and if you have the owner residing on the property, which most of these are not, I think those are some exceptions. So the owners really need to talk to their own legal counsel to determine ADA requirements.
Yeah.
But that's all I know.
Thank you.
I read the law, ADA, and with regard to accommodation of hotel accommodations.
Yes.
It's very clear that, to me at least, that ADA should apply to short-term rentals.
Yes, sir. I think you may be right. I don't, I don't know the-
Well, no, but I mean, I'm not in a legislative position.
Right.
I'm not an attorney, right? But the thing is, that I think it qualifies, you have a situation where it says hotel accommodations in the ADA. And obviously, we're treating short-term rentals like a hotel, we're collecting taxes-
Yes, sir.
-like a hotel, but then all of a sudden, it's not a hotel.
Right.
So I, maybe the future meeting, or maybe the city council can address, or the city attorney. The other thing, and I know that we don't have any input with regard to what other cities in Texas are doing, but just in the last 30 days, the Dallas City Council has banned short-term rentals in single-family residential areas. This is in the last 30 days.
Yes, sir.
Plano, Texas, May 9th to 23, temporarily banned new STRs for one year. Arlington has banned short-term rentals from most residential neighborhoods. There's got, there's something inherently wrong with short-term rentals. Now, I happen to be in the neighborhood, I live in one of your neighborhoods here in town.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not somebody that's coming to this little town in nowhere, Texas, and they see a chance to rake in some money by investing in properties that are substantially less than any big city in Texas, and I think they want to take the money and run. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hello again. Karen Hesse-Smith, single member District 5. I would like to ask Sherri if she received any comments on the opposition. No comments whatsoever. I find that surprising, because I have a constituent in that neighborhood that provided comments, and they were given directly to you, excuse me, to you, and she asked that they be included. So when we have comments in opposition, I, for one, would be very interested in hearing the nature of those comments.
Absolutely.
And that is not just for this case, but for any case-
For any of them.
-going forward, since we're having such a spicy debate this morning. And it won't surprise you that, again, I want to remind this commission that we are within a block of a daycare and kindergarten. I find that troubling, at the very least. Thank you.
I will add that we, the previous case, we had included emails and written opposition, and the reasons for that, and the next case has those as well. So, and we may have, one may have slipped through the cracks, but we do provide you those written comments, both in favor and opposition, when we have them on record. We'll double-check those in the future, but we didn't have anything on record to put in the packet for this particular case.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just for clarification purposes, this is, I can't see how that's the picture of the property.
No, it's got to be the alleyway, right? It's not a very good picture of the property.
It is. That's the alley to the side, so if you're facing the property, there's an alley to the left.
Yeah.
And this is, and I think, as Sherri mentioned, the reason for this picture is, that is the proposed location of the required parking. And as she mentioned, there's a concern that it doesn't meet our paving standards, which they will have to meet if they get approved.
We'd point out, if that is the alley, the alley is not paved either, and I-
Yes, sir.
I asked the question, if they're going to have to pave or concrete the driveway, they're going to have to also-
Concrete the alley.
Concrete the alley.
It's a great question.
Typically, in a residential neighborhood like this, we would not require, we would require paved parking spaces, but not paving the alley. As opposed to, if this were a commercial business-
Yes.
-and using this as required parking, they would have to pave all the way back to the street. But in a residential setting, we typically don't require that.
Okay.
Once again, it's not a commercial business, but they're running it like a business.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Sidney Henson, and I live directly behind this one. And my next-door neighbor lives also behind, and she said she had sent a pose. I don't know why y'all didn't receive it, but I have a couple of concerns. There's a dog run off to the left of this in the alley, and like, this has been operating to me beforehand, it's been already Airbnb. Couple of times, different dogs have come in, which is fine, I have a dog. But one of the times, the dogs got loose and came and attacked me while I was trying to trim my shrubs, so that's a concern. They also have had, twice I've caught, which I work a lot, but they have big trailer homes, and they blocked our driveway going in that alley. And I don't know what y'all's rules on trailer homes. And I don't know what y'all's rules on trailer homes. And I get it if you're traveling. I'm sure they're coming from wherever, but that is a concern too. Twice enough to where I couldn't even get in that alley, and I was going to notify them, and then they moved it and had it parked on the front. But if they're parking those trailer homes in the back, that's going to be a problem for us that have driveways over there.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I just want to point out that campers are prohibited in the ordinance on S T Rs as well.
Campers?
Yeah.
And let me clarify, I said we provided the opposition. On this case, for example, there were two opposition. And so we did receive two opposition. We typically only include it in your packet if they provide written comments of why they're opposed. If they just sent the form back that checked the box that said we're opposed, we don't necessarily provide that, but we do summarize it in the memo.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's William Thorpe. Just to address what they've been speaking on, I just barely purchased this property over the last couple of months. The lady that owned it before I did, did have a camper in the alley that she traveled in. And she also fostered animals, so there was a ton of animals there at any given point. I was under the impression it was already an Airbnb and it was approved when I bought it. That's the reason I bought it. I wasn't aware until after the fact that it wasn't approved, and that's when I went and sought approval. I've only been, it's only been up and running a month. I've already taken it down because I'm actually renting to a nurse currently. As far as the paved drive, I know I still have to do that, but other than that, I mean.
Thanks. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
I'd just like to say, I mean, I have a hard time approving something that's not compliant, like subject to it being improved. I mean, can we have, I'd rather have the spaces be in place and then us consider it and have it be in compliance with the ordinance.
Well, there are a number of requirements for short-term rentals, including paved parking. There are fire code provisions. Sometimes people have to change doors or windows or other things to meet fire code. I think the thinking has been, why make people jump through those hoops if it doesn't get approved? And so in the past on these, we've, if they've gotten approved, then they're not allowed to operate until they've met all of those conditions. But I guess professionally, I wouldn't recommend that we make people spend the money to make improvements on a property, not knowing whether or not they would get approval for a short-term rental. And so that's why we've made them conditional approvals on them meeting those standards after the fact.
Right. But we've got a lot of properties that haven't applied for permits that are, that have been operating for years as short-term rentals, not paying hotel occupancy tax, not meeting the change of occupancy inspection and fire marshal inspection. And that's what I'm concerned about. There, and you know, we look at this agenda, we have 15. We're, this is number eight on the list today, and it's 10:45. So these are long meetings. This is a very contentious issue. And, you know, I started this meeting by talking about the vetting process and wanting to discuss and debate every one of these. I think it's important. And this is a great example. It's been operating as a short-term rental, whether this gentleman's owned it or not, for a period of time. It's got an unpaved driveway. It's got limited parking in the front. It's close to a daycare. It's frustrating. Okay, anyone else have thoughts or wish to make a motion?
I just have a comment or a question really for John. Because we do this, asking for approval prior to finishing, like the paving, do you go back and make sure all those things are done prior to the approval and make sure they haven't gone ahead and started the rental process prior to finishing and getting your approval? How does that work that you know it hasn't been a rental prior?
Well, first of all, yes, they, the approval is not actually an approval until they have met all those conditions. And so they have to come in, they have to get a building permit, a change of occupancy for that operation. And only after all the building inspections and fire inspections, only then do they get that change of occupancy, which allows them to legally operate. As to, if they would start operating, that is something that we try to follow up on. It's not always easy to know if they're operating. But if we, you know, if we do follow up and they're not, they haven't gotten all those approvals, then we can stop that, issue them a violation, citations, et cetera.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion on this one?
I agree with Luke, and I understand your point regarding, you know, the approval process and making people jump through hoops. But those ordinances and that process, that vetting process exists for a reason. And I appreciate that for owners, but I also appreciate the neighbors that live there. That that's, that's, there, I mean, there are rules for a reason. So I either, I don't know if it's possible to table this until that's done or how that goes about, but I don't, I certainly, that's my opinion.
At this point with the ordinance, the way it's written, these are conditional uses, which means you approve them subject to them meeting certain conditions. I don't think you have any ability to basically require them to make those improvements prior to the approval. Now, you could table it or deny it, saying, well, we're just not going to approve it until they do those things. But that's, I guess I would caution against that because that's not how we do any other conditional use approvals for any other type of use, whether it's residential, commercial. It's always an approval, and then they have to meet all the conditions.
Thank you, John.
All right, I'm taking a motion from anybody.
I make a motion to deny this one because it's already, I'm very concerned about the alley coming back in. And until, I believe that if, this is going to be one of those that we do want to make into an S T R, that the investment has to be in and that, you know, it's all done prior. So I am not in favor of this one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed to the denial? Okay, so six-zero to deny.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, sir.
In the parking lot along the street, there's a white Cadillac SUV that's blocking someone. I'm not sure that they're in this meeting, but it's a white Cadillac SUV, license plate L M Y 9826. So they're just blocking somebody in that's trying to get out.
Thank you, Aaron.
Is there any possible way we could do something with this air situation?
Turn the air up just a little bit.
It's like blowing my papers around. Sorry. Don't mean to be the new kid here.
You've been migrating that direction for a while.
So sorry. Next time, I will wear a sweater, I promise. I'm so sorry.
All right, we're going to take a three-minute break.
Sorry.
You need to go outside.
My papers, like, it's like, oh, I don't know. So sorry.
Yeah.
I know, sorry. I was like.
What's wrong with you?
I don't understand. Super dramatic, but my papers like flew away. I was like, wow.
I can see your hair blowing back.
Next case is CU 2318, 3220 Trinity Avenue. A request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 3220 Trinity Avenue. Ms. Bailey?
As you indicated, this is a conditional use, short-term rental for 3220 Trinity Avenue. This also is in District Five, Ms. Smith's district, and it's the ASU College Hills neighborhood. We sent out 27 notices. We had zero in favor. We had four in opposition, and you can see those on the map. Staff is recommending approval as long as they meet the three normal conditions that we attach, which is to maintain all of the off-street parking on the premises to obtain their certificate of occupancy from the permits and inspections division and to obtain and comply with the annual fire inspection. With that, are there any questions?
There's three in opposition.
Four.
Four in opposition.
Four, yes, sir.
And we have a letter on one?
As far as I know, yes.
I believe that's it.
And I believe you have a copy in your packet.
From Ms. Elrod. So this is the only written?
Yes.
Commentary on the opposition that you received?
The rest of them were just check.
All right. Anyone have questions for the staff? I don't, do you know if this one was operating as a short-term rental before this meeting?
I do not, no.
Okay.
Comments had three in opposition, but the slide says, has four. Was one a late submission?
One was a late submission, yes. It was picked up late on Friday.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and single member district, or, excuse me, or single member district. Is the applicant here? All right, we're going to have the applicant. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Be nice to have the applicant. Anyone want to share comments or make a motion on this one?
Well, I would make the comment that in the letter we did receive, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, the comment made by this written opposition letter, this property has been operating as a short-term rental since at least January of 2022.
Yep.
When I had to contact the property owner regarding her guests or their guests blocking a mailbox with vehicles. So the answer to the question that Sherri didn't really know was, yes, it was operating prior.
Sorry. I think this is where it gets challenging because, you know, based on the letter of opposition, there had been prior issues, but since it was operating outside of the city guidelines, we don't have any true documentation or complaints. So again, that's, this is going to be one of those that's a little bit more challenging to approve than some of the others.
I personally feel like if you're applying for a short-term rental, you should come to the meeting. Or at least send representation here. Okay, anyone want to make a motion on this one?
Make a motion to deny.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor of denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed to denial? So six-zero to deny. CU 2319, 635 South Jefferson Street. A request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 635 South Jefferson.
Again, this is a short-term rental application that is in District Five, Karen Hesse Smith's district in the Santa Rita neighborhood. In this case, we sent out 13 notices. We received three in favor. We have four opposed. Again, staff looking at the overall application, talking with the property owner. We are recommending approval subject to the three conditions that we normally have.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Do you know if this is operating as a short-term rental?
I do not, and I apologize. This was not one of mine, and we had a staff member who got sick with COVID on the weekend, so.
Oh, goodness.
Coming in, I don't have the information for some of them.
Okay. I think we're going to open it up for public comment.
Thank you, and I apologize for maybe being out of place, but I lived in the Santa Rita neighborhood with the other gentleman I spoke earlier.
If you could state your name and single member district or address.
James Kaywood. I don't know the single member district. I think it's five. It's the Santa Rita Elementary. But I had, I wanted to make one comment before I talk while I'm really opposed to this. I'd just like to know, I've never been in these meetings before. I don't know technically what your job is, what power you have, anything. I'd just like to ask you, what do you think you're doing in these neighborhoods by doing this? Oversaturating them with short-term rental units that may or may not be taken care of, may have been not done anything. Would you want that in your neighborhood? Would you think that's the best thing in America? Do you know any city in America who's bragging on their website where the short-term rental capital of the United States? I don't know any. I just can't figure that out. But my main opposition to this is right directly across the street from Santa Rita Elementary.
Yes, sir.
It has a playground. It has a park. It has a sofa drawback. Your kids are down there day and night playing and goofing off, just like I did when I was a kid, just like you did. At what point are we going to take a chance on a child because somebody wants to have a short-term rental? I'm not opposed to business. You're not opposed to business. We all work somewhere and are probably pretty successful at it. But we can't just say this is going to be the one business that we're going to have everywhere. It's not going to be the salvation of San Angelo. I can tell you that. We need regular, big businesses coming here, industrial businesses. And that's my only comment. We better consider those children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Okay.
I'm Barbara Montague. I live directly next door to this property. And I've lived there, District Five, I've lived there for 13 years. And when, when we moved into our property, the house next door, this subject property, and the house behind us were owner-occupied. And over the course of the years, actually quite short after that, both, two of the three houses surrounding me are rentals or had been long-term rentals. I have dealt with long-term rental problems for years with unkept yards, barking dogs constantly, day and night, never really knowing who the renters are. I would like to say that this house has really, had really, over the years, lost curb appeal. It was very rundown. The person who purchased the house has improved that curb appeal immensely and attempted to cosmetically really improve things, both in the house and outside. I have, I am one of those that actually sent in a comment that was in favor of it as a short-term rental. And I will explain that that's actually just selfish because my experience with long-term rentals has been very negative. And this owner has four options. She can move into it herself, in which case there probably will be a lot of noise because there has already been a lot of noise with her family using the property. She can sell the property. She can make it a short-term rental or a long-term rental. And I don't think she's intending to move into it. And I don't think she has an intention of just fixing it up and flipping it and selling it. So my concern is that it will become a long-term rental, and I will be, again, dealing with people who are not caring for the property and may have, you know, extended problems with animals. And, you know, evictions in those cases are quite difficult a lot of times. Whereas in a short-term rental, they're gone in a couple of days, or she can kick them out if they're not following rules. So I am mixed on this still. So I am mixed on this still. I would prefer that it was a family moving in and, you know, that we're going to be taking care of it, but I, you know, I, I know it was purchased by an investor, and I don't think that's her intent. So, uh, I am concerned about it being across the street from the school. I think that's a big concern.
Yes.
But as far as, uh, I know that most people's worry about short-term rental is the noise, and the noise happens anyway.
Right. Thank you very much.
Oh, I did have one other, uh, question. If you could clarify the parking regulations in short-term rentals? Again, did you say it had to do with the number of bedrooms?
Parking regulation.
No, only separately rented bedrooms. So like, like I said, a bed and breakfast for each separately rented bedroom would have to have an extra parking space.
So the only requirement in a short-term rental is two off-street parking spots?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
With a large house, that would be my concern.
Right.
It's across from the school, there's a lot of cars parked there.
Yes.
A lot of the time, and so I can picture cars being parked along Jefferson Street. But.
Thank you.
There are four spots there.
All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? I think you're it.
Hello, everybody. My name is Catherine Martinez. I'm the owner of the property. Um, as she said, I am an investor. I am as well a restaurant owner here in town and a local realtor. So, uh, my life is crazy, right? So I do all three. Um, so I did want to speak on a couple of the things that were brought up, not just right now, but even during the whole course of the meeting. Um, in regards to the noise and everything else, um, yes, yesterday was Father's Day, and I had, I have five boys, three adults, children, a teenager, and a four-year-old. So I started all over, and then I have four grandchildren. So, um, yeah, so we got adult children, you got their wives, my grandchildren, and then my four-year-old. So they were having a blast yesterday. We did wrap it up by 6:30 because I'm tired, and, uh, I know how to be here, which is, you know, gets here pretty quick. So we wrapped that up, cleaned up the house and everything else. She is right, I have spent a lot of money renovating this home. And, yeah, when I say a lot, I'm talking about over $100,000. Whenever you look at this property, if you ever drove by it before, it was an absolute eyesore. It almost looked like a witch's house. It was overgrown trees, the color, the roof was blowing off, I mean, the fence was leaned over. I mean, it was a complete nightmare. I knew that taking it on. Um, the reason that I took it on was myself, as you can hear, I have a large family. When we travel to events, we like to stay with each other because my older boys, they live in San Antonio. My third son, he's in the Army, so he is stationed in Europe. So whenever we get together, we want to stay together as a family, and so we look for accommodations as of the sort. With San Angelo, yes, there are many, many short-term rentals, as there is every neighborhood across Texas or the U.S. The difference is on this one, it is a large home where it can accommodate my, my boys, their wives, and, and the kids all together under the same roof. Um, so when you look at San Angelo, there's two other ones. That's it, that are about this size that can accommodate that. So whenever you look at military families, right? So you have people, like, if I'm going to go, we're going to go to Europe, we're probably all going to go to Europe whenever we visit. We're going to be looking for a large house to stay at. My son probably wouldn't like if we stayed at his barracks, you know, it's a little tiny with all of us and everything. That wouldn't work. So that's what we would look for. Again, military coming in, there are no accommodations for our town. You've got the college, the same thing. I know whenever we toured colleges before, we sat on UTSA in San Antonio, we went to Austin, we went to Lubbock, we went to several different places to tour, and we all went because I wanted all my kids to experience that, especially with the first one, whenever he was going to college. It was like a vacation for us. And that's what we did. We toured different colleges, went to different towns, and we needed those type of accommodations. Someone else brought up the rodeo. Yes, this is true. Rodeo families, they rodeo together, you know? They stay together. They look for large houses like this. So that's, that's one, one deal on, on that. One thing about this, another deal, is it's controlled. Um, another lady, she had spoke about as far as, um, yes, we, Airbnb allows us to do reviews, and so we can review them as well. So whenever we're looking at that, if I see somebody that likes to party, you think I'm going to spend $100,000 and let someone party in my house? You're crazy. My rules are going to be way stricter than the city's, I guarantee you, you know? And whenever I look at that, I'm just like, okay, my neighbor, um, you know, any of my neighbors, I don't get to know, they're not carding people. I don't know, you know, who's going in and out of their house. I have no idea. Long-term, short-term rental, you know, I don't know. My neighbor, you know, if she decides to have someone over there that's a, a bad person, I don't know. I don't get a notice to come over here and talk about it or anything like that. It just, it's, it's not controlled. This, the city has controlled, you know, in regards to rules, laws, everything, and I agree with all of them, though, yes, they are long, and yes, I had to submit site plans, this, that, I mean, all kinds of, you know, things that we had to jump through just to get approved on, you know, not to mention just paved parking. I mean, there's so many more, um, that we have to abide by that any other person wouldn't. So I did want to talk about that. As far as being next to the school, I can tell you it's actually one of the safest places to be for your children. Have you ever gone to Santa Rita or any school for pickup? It's crazy. There's a thousand eyes out there. There's crosswalks, there's a, there's a cop over there. If you go down the wrong way, he's going to tell you something, you know? That, right there, I mean, if you, if, if I'm a bad person, I'm not going to give you my ID, I'm not going to give you my credit card or whatever, and then I'm, I'm not going to wait over there with all these thousands of eyes. No. What I'm going to do is wait till the child's way down the road, getting dropped off out of bus, or I'm just going to take my little car and just ride up there. Why, why would I go through all of that trouble? You know? I mean, you've got to be logical, too. Yes, it's by a school, okay? But anyone can walk through that school. They don't need to rent a house for it. You know, they don't need to do any of that stuff. And so when I look at it, to me, that's a safe place because thousands of eyes, right there. There's even a camera. I know this because someone stole my garage door the other day in this wonderful neighborhood, you know? And so I had to have someone, you know, rebuild it and everything else, which is fine, you know? And I know crime is everywhere. It doesn't matter where it's at, you know? And I am, you know, as far as San Angelo, I love San Angelo. I've been here, I'm a, a military brat, so I've traveled everywhere, but I've been here the majority of my life, and I've established three businesses here. I raise my children here, my grandchildren here. You know, yes, when we get together, we all get together, we have fun together, but this is something that I will be regulating. I have a plan in place. I even have, like, when you push the button or when they come in, I have a, a doorbell, like a camera that sees outside. So if I got a lot of traffic, I'm going to be like, tut, 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 or I'm going to call my neighbor, who she has my direct number, and be like, hey, everything good over there? You know what I mean? So, and I'll be happy to give anybody that as well, you know? But whenever, that's, to me, this is, this right here, let's talk about job opportunity. I have two landscapers, I have a social media person I've hired for this, I have two maids that I've hired. I've given jobs to at least six people in regards to this house, you know? So I'm actually bringing jobs as well, you know? This, to me, is very serious. This is not just a short-term rental, this is my home, this is my investment, and I will protect my investment on, on any cost. And if I see anything or anything like that, I promise you, like I said, and I'm a realtor, so I've got a license to uphold, a very high, you know, thing that I've got to look at. I'm not just anybody just trying to dabble into this. I have long-term rentals as well in my investment company. I chose not to do it with this because they damaged my property. It took me the last time, three months, to get a renter out, not paying rent, destroyed my property, broke my windows, um, all kinds of things. I had to replace all the carpets, the list goes on, thousands and thousands of dollars that I had to do to get that person out. This one, I get a phone call from the police, I get a phone call from anybody, I live five minutes from this house, and I'm there. And I'm like, hey, contract says you're out. You violated this rule. That's it. There is no waiting months and months, there's nothing like that. So there's, there's a lot of benefits to this, and I, I just want you guys to know, what I am trying to look at is not just, this is a staycation, I printed off, this is a something that I have on this porch floor. Now, if you look at this, I want to ask yourself, you know, ask yourself, is this something that looks like a staycation, something where your family can enjoy a nice barbecue, hang out with the kids, hang out with the grandkids? You know, or does this look like I'm trying to attract certain pleasures or certain anything crazy and stay with them? There's certain price points you can get there, you know, in, at this house. It's not just going to be to accommodate anybody. I mean, it's going to be somebody that maybe has planned for a staycation. You've got people that, they want to get all the kids and everybody together, but guess what? They can't because they don't got time to travel. They got two days off, you know? They can't take off from work, or they don't have the money for airplanes or whatever it is, you know? And so this gives that an opportunity, you know, for them to actually have their family and do a staycation, so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any questions?
Appreciate it.
Any questions?
The, the flyer that you've put together, uh, is very nice.
Thank you.
And the improvements that you've made on that house have made a huge difference.
Thank you so much.
So I think you've done a great job.
Thank you. The inside, from the roof to the plumbing, to the electrical, the floors, the walls, everything.
Everything.
Yes, I mean, it is gorgeous, and I would live there, too, but it's so much house for me, and only when I have all the kids. No, they'll always be there, no kidding. But, you know what I mean? That's kind of where I live at.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak on this one? I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion. I think, uh, I'm about as familiar with this house as probably anyone in this room. My three children went to Santa Rita, I went to Santa Rita, my parents went to Santa Rita. I know the school, I know this house, and, um, I am concerned about having a short-term rental property across the street from a school. It is a business, and, um, and I think separating the businesses from schools is important. That is my only real concern about this, this property. I think, I think the owner's done an, an amazing job with the improvements, and, uh, she's the kind of person that we'd like to have running short-term rentals in our community. She has a lot of care and passion for it. And those are my thoughts. Anyone else want to share thoughts or make a motion?
I just wanted to share that same thought. I think that, uh, you've done an excellent job explaining, you know, your goals and improving the community and the, the things that you've done to ensure, I mean, I don't know, I think in my mind, these are the type of short-term rentals we're looking for, um, and especially as it relates to the improvement of the property, which even your neighbors spoke to as well.
Anyone want to make a motion? Uh, yes, ma'am. Would you like to, if, if you would, please come up to the, to the podium. Is there some way that we could get a, a microphone to her? They're going to bring you a microphone.
What? I can't hear.
I'm going to open up public comment.
What's going on?
Yes, ma'am.
I am a little concerned because I live across the street from this, uh, property.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've lived there since 1968, and it's a quiet neighborhood.
That's Jerry's.
And it has been quiet, and was, I was hoping it would remain quiet.
Yes, ma'am.
I can hear at the moment a lot of noise from that property inside my house, which is across the street. That's not very far.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's a lot of, of, of noise coming from outside that house and inside that house. Uh, having, could, could, it can be all kinds of noise from music, loud music, and it's coming from, as I say, outside and inside. There is a pool, and it's very conducive to whoever is there in that home, whether they're lessees or, uh, permanent people, that, all of that can bother the neighborhood. I understand that even a block from there, uh, the noise travels there to the person that lives in that home, a block from that property.
Okay.
So it needs to be very carefully supervised, whatever happens in that property. It, it's, it's been a nice home for several different families who have lived there, and we've had no problems in the neighborhood with, uh, what I've just reported to you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and opposed? Aye.
Yeah.
Are you opposed?
Mm-hmm.
Candy? So four-two to approve. All right. CU 2320, 1854 Guadalupe Street. Request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 1854 Guadalupe Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property, uh, when I went out and put up the sign with my husband, the property owner was in the yard, was weeding the yard, so I stood and talked to her for about an hour and a quarter. She talked about, she has a number of rental properties, some of them are long-term rentals, some of them are short-term rentals. She said she's trying to convert all of her long-term rentals to short-term rentals for exactly the same reason. They stay there a very short time, she vets the individuals, um, she does not get the property damage that she gets on long-term rentals. Her process, having talked to her, I, she showed me exactly what her process was. Once she's notified that somebody is interested in renting the property, she contacts them to find out if they have any special needs, if they have, uh, any requirements. She visits with them about exactly how long they're going to be there, uh, about her list of requirements as far as, uh, visitors coming, et cetera. She said she got that advice about five years ago when she started, uh, doing short-term rentals from another friend that did short-term rentals, and that over the years, she has been very much involved with her short-term rental properties. Going back, this is in District Four, Lucy Gonzalez's district, and it is in the central neighborhood. They, we sent out 23 notices, we received three in favor and one against, and as you can see, that one against is right on the edge. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use for the short-term rental, uh, subject to the three conditions of approval that we have on all of them. And with that, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open up public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward. All right, we're going to close public comment and, uh, take a motion.
Making a motion to approve is presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero approve. CU 2323, 914 Wichita Avenue. Request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 914 Wichita Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in District Two, Tom Thompson's district, and it's also, uh, a central neighborhood. When we went out and put the sign up in this, uh, property, we did talk to a neighbor who said that they were aware that this person had, over a period of time, occasionally had it as a short-term rental, and so I, I think this is one that came in from the audit that was done.
Okay.
Uh, we have sent out 22 notices, we had zero in favor, we did have one opposed. Again, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use, subject to our three normal conditions. Are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name or single-member If you wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name or single member district. All right. We're going to close public comment and I'll take thoughts or a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-o. CU 2325, 3834 Old Post Road. Request for approval of a conditional use for a short-term rental located at 3834 Old Post Road.
This is in District Six, Larry Miller's district. It's in the Sunset neighborhood. When we went out, we again put up the sign, talked to an adjoining property owner who said they were not aware that the neighbor was wanting to make this a short-term rental, but they really didn't have anything that they wanted to say at the time. I encouraged them to send in a notice that they would be getting one and to send in either positive or negative. We sent out 22 notices. We had zero in favor and we did have one in opposition. Again, staff is recommending approval, subject to the three conditions. And with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for the staff? All right. We're going to open it up for public comment.
My name is Jane Harbor, and I live at 3830 Old Post Road, right next door to this property. One of the ones that, this is my first time attending a meeting such as this, and my concern that brought me here was that if you're going to bring commerce into a residential neighborhood down the road, what other type of commerce are you going to bring in here? And so that's what brought me here. The other concern that I have is that right down the street, if you're familiar with the area, we are within walking distance of Hobby Lobby, Sherwood Way, and seven brand-new, well, not brand-new, but only several years-old motels have been built down there when they thought oil was coming to San Angelo. So we have seven motels within pretty much walking distance of this house. On the flip side of the coin, though, I do have to say, I have met several, personally met several of the people that have rented this house, and I have not had one iota of trouble. As a matter of fact, I had one of them, because I didn't know what was going on, so I went over there to welcome them to the neighborhood. No, no, we don't live here. But one of them even came to me and said, "I'm having a party. Here's my phone number. If there's any parking problem, any noise problem, anything," you know? So there has been no problem whatsoever with anyone who has rented that house.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right. I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. CU 2327, 3406 Clearview Drive. Request for approval of conditional use for a short-term rental located at 3406 Clearview Drive.
Yes. This is in District Six, again, Larry Miller's district, and it's the Southland neighborhood. We sent out 21 notices. We received none in favor. We had 15 opposed, and I received two this morning that were handed to me, that were also against this property becoming a short-term rental. Staff is recommending approval of the conditional use, subject to the three, our three traditional items. With that, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right. We're going to open it up for public comment.
I was wanting to say good morning.
Barely. You barely got here in time.
But now it's getting later. Mike Calamitick is my name. And I am a long-term resident of San Angelo. I was a partner in the Miller Coors Beer Distribution for 25 years. I was a general manager of Glaciers for 12. I bought this home right next door to this home, which is on the corner. If you see that picture right there, you see the bumper of that white pickup? It's been parked there for six months. Never moved. Prior to that, there was a boat parked there.
Yep.
They red-tagged it and had to have it moved. I'm not, the young man and girl that own this home now, have owned it two years. They've done a ton of work on it. They have a beautiful backyard, outdoor kitchen, swimming pool. If you were going to rent it, would you be renting it to sleep in a bed or party in that backyard? I think party. I think rodeo. I think boat races. It's going to be a big problem. And you asked about partying. Well, I told you my background. I know what that is. It can be bad. The back picture of that, there's a fence that goes across that. You can't drive into that. And that fence, I think, is on a remote. And I don't know if they'll allow someone to use that or not. But it was put there because of the dogs that were back there, which were big pitbulls to keep them away from people. So, you know, I look at this, and I tell the guy, I said, "You know, Mike," I said, "I understand commerce, understand making money, and I want you to do well." And I said, "I want protection for me, my family, my grandchildren that come and stay with us." I said, "I really don't want people parking in front of my home. And I don't want banana peels thrown over the fence in my swimming pool from partiers." So he said, "We'll put that in our lease agreement that that won't happen. And if it does happen, we just won't refund their money." I said, "But who's going to come pick up the banana peelings? And who's going to move those cars?" So I see the thing up there that says "Maintain." Isn't that what that first slide said? Let me put that back up there. I'm curious about how do you maintain all off-street parking? How do you maintain? That's what I'm curious.
Right. I don't think there's a way to prevent someone from parking on the street that would go into that house.
Yeah. So if they're parked in front of my house?
Yeah.
And then my family comes, where do they park?
Right. Down the street.
You know, my home was just appraised for $588,000. Do any of you guys have this kind of situation next to your home?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Brenda Coates. My husband, Kim, and I have lived next door to this home for 38 years. And we built our home. This was a new home. When it was, when we moved in, this home was almost brand-new. We have been the neighbor of this property for 38 years. There have been wonderful people who have lived in this home. I cannot speak highly of the folks who own it now. Our bedroom backs up to this driveway. I cannot begin to tell you the number of times that we have been awakened in the night, not been able to go to sleep because they are having parties in the backyard. I anticipate a continuation of this issue if this approval is granted. And I will tell you that I strongly oppose this rental. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lori Handley. My husband Fred is here with me today. We've lived in this neighborhood for 23 years. We're close friends with people who you've just listened to. We're a very close neighborhood. This home, as well as the swimming pool and the party atmosphere, is a four-bedroom home, and it's got about three living areas. I know that because my best friend used to live in the house. So it's got three living areas, and it is so conducive to a party atmosphere that will really be disturbing to the neighborhood. And as my neighbors have also mentioned, that we've had issues with dogs in this property with the current owners, or current occupants. I don't know if they're owners or not, to tell you the truth, because we don't know anything about them. They won't be part of our neighborhood. We're close-knit, and they won't even work with us. But anyhow, so with the dogs being an issue already in that home, I'm curious, are they going to allow dogs or pets at the rental? Are we going to have to be dealing with dogs there, too? We have dogs, but we take care of them. In our whole neighborhood, we all have pets, and we take care of them. So those are some of the issues that I've had as far as the property being a rental. As Mike said, also, it is a gate that goes across this driveway that you see right here that's, it's a remote control, and it's a huge gate, and it just blocks that whole driveway off. So that, again, will add to the conducive-ness of a party atmosphere. As I said before, we're a very close-knit neighborhood. We watch out for each other. We just got back from vacation. Before we left, we let our neighbors know, "We're leaving. Please keep an eye out on the place for us." And they do the same with us. So having somebody coming in and out of this place will just, I think, it just kind of changes the way our neighborhood is. We purchased this home zoned as a single-family residential area. That's what we wanted. That's why we purchased a home in this area. If somebody wants to do a short-term rental, then purchase a home for that purpose. But we have this because we want to be in a neighborhood that's close-knit. My last thing that I want to mention is I've been concerned that there have been opposition to prior requests for short-term rentals. And I hope that you'll listen to us. I don't feel like the other people who were opposed to it were listened to. We took time out of our day. We changed our schedule. This is important enough to us to come up here and tell you this is how we feel. I'm shaking right now. I'm nervous, very nervous. So we go through a lot to come up here to talk to you about this. You sent out the notices. You wanted to hear our opinions. I hope they matter to you. I thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Jen.
Yes, sir.
I just now noticed what your name is, the Stribblings.
Yes, sir.
I happen to have lived in a close-by neighborhood as well, and went to Santa Rita myself.
Yeah.
So for what that's worth, I am Ray Bishop. I spoke a while ago on behalf of my son for the address on Colorado Street. We live directly, almost directly behind this property that is in discussion today, the width of the alley. We've been in this location 37 years. It is a super neighborhood on Silver Spur, a super neighborhood on Clearview. The folks that owned this home, when they first moved in, and if anyone read what I wrote to the city's reply, were an abomination to the neighborhood. They came from out in Midland, of which I have no problem with Midland. I lived there six and a half years myself. Two pit bulldogs, as you can see by the picture that is on the screen right now, the back was wide open. They had the pit bulldogs encased in a wire screen. The ladies especially that walked down the alley to our mailboxes, because we have cluster mailboxes at the end of the street, we live on the corner. Mike spoke a while ago. He lives directly behind us. He lives on the corner of Clearview. They have moved out of that house or have left the house. They still own it and have been staying out at the lake. While they were there, there was parties, there was loud music. They finally did put up a fence across the back of the yard to help contain the pitbulls because they would run at the fence and hit the fence and all like that, and scared everyone walking down that alley, as Lori that just spoke can attest to, and Brenda. This neighborhood, and the fellow that had to leave a while ago, Joe Reed, lives across the street. He's been in his location for 38 years. This is a well-maintained neighborhood. As you can tell, some of us are older. Our next-door neighbor to us, who could not attend because she has osteoporosis, could not attend, is up in her 80s. We are, as you saw on the screen earlier, we're opposed.
Yes, sir.
And we are strongly opposed. This has been a quiet neighborhood. It has, we were one of four, excuse me, one of four houses on Silver Spur when we bought the place that we're in right now. It's at that time, a relatively new neighborhood. We don't need short-term rentals.
Yes, sir.
We want to keep our peaceful neighborhood. We would consider, please encourage you to consider not approving this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Our home next door to this is currently for sale. If you approve this, the sale will fall through.
Okay.
They will not buy my home.
Thank you. No applicant? Okay. Yes, sir.
Brett Handley, my wife just talked to you. I just want to make a quick statement. Everybody's talking about the family that lives there. We're glad they're gone.
Right. I gathered that from the comments.
I'm here to talk about Airbnb and these kind of things.
Yes, sir.
This is a very quiet neighborhood, mostly retired people, and we really don't want to have some kind of an STR down the street.
Yes, sir. I understand. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right. I'm going to close public comment. Leave it up to my peers here to make a motion.
Okay. So obviously, we've seen some cases come before us today with some opposition. This by far has, I would say, the entire neighborhood in opposition, and there's only been probably two cases over the past two years that we've truly seen the entire neighborhood come out in full protest of the STR. And in my opinion, based on what the neighbors' comments have been, and I am actually familiar with this house, it was for sale a few years back, I do not believe that this would be a good use in this neighborhood as an STR. So I'm in opposition.
I agree. I don't think you can ignore 17 letters of opposition.
Is that a motion?
No.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All right. So we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Six-zero to deny. Okay. CU 2328, 2310 West Tuig. Request for approval of conditional use for a short-term rental located at 2310 West Tuig.
Again, this is in District Five, Karen Hesse Smith's district, in the Santa Rita neighborhood. We sent out 23 notices. There were three in favor and one against. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the three. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the three conditions of approval. And with that, are there any questions?
Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Ms. Bailey. We're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name or single-member district. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Do we know if this one's been operating prior to this meeting as a short-term rental? All right. There's certainly not a requirement for an applicant to show up to a meeting, but, boy, it goes a long way in my mind. We have rules, we have guidelines for maintaining these short-term rentals. And I think to see the care and the commitment to maintaining these properties and caring for the neighbors and doing the right thing for the neighborhood for those that are operating is really important. So, it's hard for me to support a short-term rental that doesn't have the applicant here to speak in favor of it. But I will defer to my colleagues to make a motion. All right. We have a motion to deny.
Just a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
In the background, the staff has, applicant didn't come back for renewal, so this is a short-term rental that after the first year didn't come back to do what was necessary to recertify his property. And so, I'll second the motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed to the denial? So, 6-0 to deny. CU 2329, 2406 North Bryant. Request for approval of a conditional use, request to allow retail sales and services in the heavy commercial zoning district at 2406 North Bryant. It looks like we've gone through all the short terminals.
Yes.
Yeah.
We've got 15 minutes to get through the rest of this agenda.
No rush. It's in here.
They're getting closer.
You've got about 15 minutes to get through the rest of this agenda.
No rush. It's in here. You were on Miles, right? Which one did you go to, or did you go to?
I'm on North Bryant Boulevard.
While we're looking for this, can I just ask a question after we beat short-term rentals to death?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, does the staff recommend that the owner who is filing the application attend the meeting? Is that a recommendation that y'all provide?
Yes, we typically will tell an applicant that it's usually in their best interest to show up at the meeting.
Yeah.
I just feel like, and for anyone that might be publicly watching this, you know, you're planning to put a business in the community and receive revenue on your investment and it does not look good on the owners to not take, you know, two hours out of their day in order to come and fight for their business venture.
Yeah, or at least send a representative, send someone that's going to express your interest.
Right.
I agree.
Well, and I think that's, we wanted to hear from both sides and we're not hearing from both sides.
No.
We've had one owner that has talked, this gentleman here.
I showed up.
Yes, you did.
No, no, I mean, I didn't get notice that this was even going on.
Oh.
And luckily I did, is what I'm saying.
Okay, well, we appreciate you being here.
That's good input. No, wait, I thought you had two cases.
I had three, actually, but I didn't get notice that this was going to be today. I only saw a flyer. A friend of mine lives across the street from 621 and she said it was 9 o'clock today, that's why I showed up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for letting us know that.
So, Sherry, what's the message? Why would we not have been notified that?
I don't know. Why do you, I don't know. Aren't we in the process of being notified?
Hello. Hi. Yes, Sherry, how are you?
Fine. And this is, you know, a, well, I'll be bringing that before and today.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a friend that, is that just email or is it, can you mail like?
My property is spoken.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it was.
Do you want to just?
If I'm going to come in, they should.
Do you have an email?
They have a blank.
And right in the, you know, so they go, they're handling.
Yeah, right there on the spot. It is very important.
Okay, G C Palmer, 32.
I'll make a note right now. What was the, across the street from me?
Jefferson. Okay, you got it.
It's a great house.
It's seen different owners.
Right.
But not original.
Right.
John and Old People.
No, I don't know. I think that's.
That's good.
Yeah.
They keep going to 2314.
I understand your concern.
And then, the law is, wow, hard experience, that's because it's a done deal, you know,
the.
Right.
So, crossing the.
I think you've got to.
And there's an ordinance, yes, always over after 10:30. I mean, it's written in the ordinance, it's done. And so, I mean, that's an obvious.
But even during the day.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay. You want me to go here? Okay. Give me one second.
Some of these people are going to get rude away in the future.
I don't know. I didn't look carefully. I mean, actually.
Well, I only.
She's the opposite.
Not many.
And that's, that's, there are a lot of career people.
Can that be, show up, Washington?
I have five or six.
It's my.
One thing that I do give a little bit of credit for is that.
I think they're.
Yes.
And, yeah.
Not all.
They show up.
Bother to respond.
Right. And there's no way I could, I guess, indeed. It's a family. And I know that area fairly well.
Well, I'll get this, I'll get this email, that's what.
Not a period, but a grand, this three years, and he was out, you know, just.
I can run a copy and drop it by.
Yeah.
We'll take care of it.
Yes, ma'am. Boy, I can't tell. That's what we ought to be doing. See a little girl.
Good to see you. No, we're not quite done. All right, so, sorry for the delay. The next case, we're going to skip down to Z 2306, 2153 Valley View Drive. A request for approval of a rezoning from single-family RS1 zoning to two-family RS2, a property located at 2153 Valley View Drive.
Okay, Zach Rainbow, Planning Development Services. As you mentioned, this is Z 2306, 2153 Valley View Drive. Current zoning is single-family RS1, .329 acres. They propose to rezone to RS2 to build duplexes, single-member district one, Tommy Hebert, Country Club neighborhood, as you can see, to the south and east there. That is the Bentwood Country Club. Here's aerial here, you can see the property outline. As you can see, the properties to the north and south have multifamily zoning, have the RS3 zoning, which is multifamily, zero lot line, and then the properties to the west and north are duplex zoning as, or RM1.
Zach, I'm sorry, I want to correct that. RS3 is not multifamily, it's high-density, single-family.
Okay. Zero lot line, high-density, single-family, which allows townhouses.
Yes, sir.
Et cetera. And then RM1 is to the east and to the north.
Yes.
Allows the multifamily. However, many of the homes did develop in single-family fashion. Staff's recommendation is approval to zone from RS1 to RS2. The vision plan calls for neighborhood, which RS2 is compatible with. The difference is, I'll get to those. The main difference is the allowance of duplexes and also the floor-to-area ratio. That's included in your staff report. With the rezoning, it goes from a .5 FAR to a point, or it's .45 to a .5. That and the duplexes are the only difference in the zoning from RS1 to RS2. A picture of the lot here, picture of the intersection, you can see. This is the last vacant lot. What happened when the neighborhood has developed, this was set aside as a community mailbox lot, essentially. It is no longer used as such and is large enough to split, therefore, the reason for the request. Staff is recommending approval from RS1 to RS2. Again, it's compatible with the zoning surrounding it, it's compatible, it meets the criteria within the land development subdivision ordinance and staff is recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Zach, are there any duplex properties nearby? I see the zoning, but I don't see, based on this aerial photo, any duplex properties.
They're going to be townhomes, so it's going to be more than just a duplex, split by lot lines, three minimum to the east there. Zero lot lines when they're attached and divided by the property lines, those are townhomes. A duplex would be on one lot.
Okay.
With no common lot lines splitting it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is it, is townhomes not?
That's correct.
Correct. And I'll show you some.
Do we have a mock-up or anything?
Yeah, is there, do you have any renderings? Do you have something that shows what they're planning to do here?
They did not. It's just a straight rezoning to single-family. I did not have a design layout of the home they're proposing.
We're not rezoning to single-family, this would be a duplex, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's, yes, two-family single.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Zach? All right, thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name or single-member district.
Hello, my name's Dwayne Custer and I live in the cul-de-sac at, on Valley View Court, 5210. And I've spoken with the people that live in the cul-de-sac and I assume they are the ones all that sent in the disapproval. There's a demarcation, I believe the street's called Westway. Anytime you turn off of Knickerbocker onto Valley View.
Yes.
On the right-hand side, it's full of duplexes. They don't keep their yards.
Those are townhomes, they're not duplexes, they're townhouses, right? They're duplexes.
They're duplexes. There are no duplex, no town, no duplexes beyond Westway. Everything to the north is townhomes, patio homes, or single-family residential homes.
Okay.
The people that fence back up to this piece of property weren't able to be here today, but I spoke with Gilbert DeRoche and his wife and they're very opposed to it because they don't know what's going to go in there.
Right.
If you, if they changed it over to putting in townhomes, it might be different. People seem to take a little better care of a townhome than a duplex. A lot of times a duplex is purchased and then rented out.
Right.
And we don't want that in our neighborhood.
Okay.
A lot of people don't want the STRs evidently, that I've seen today.
Yes.
We don't want the duplexes beyond that demarcation. There's already duplexes to the south of it, or actually to the west, really.
Yeah.
So, that's our complaint. We just don't think we need that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. This one's tough, guys, for me. It's surrounded by single-family homes. RS3 zoning seems like a better fit for this lot than maybe a duplex lot.
Is RS3 the townhome?
Yes. The zero lot line, and I think the properties that are going kind of east on Valley View here, all of that, can you go back to the zoning? Yeah. So, if you go east on Valley View there, all of that's RS3. And RM1, I mean, you're right on the boundary line. RM1 to the west, RS3 to the east. And while there's RS2 zoning on the south of this lot, they've all been improved with, it looks like, pretty large, single-family homes.
Yeah, the average, or footage, coming down Valley View, those patio homes, it's like holes, but they just.
Yeah. And a cul-de-sac that has five.
Yeah, huge.
Single-family homes in it.
It affects the west by cul-de-sac.
Right.
And the house right between it is like single and then it goes into.
I make a motion to deny. I'd like to see an RS3. I know that area real well, I travel it every day.
Yeah.
And I think we need to contain the duplexes where they are currently.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to. All right, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So six-zero to deny.
Thank you.
Um, kind of jumping around here. Uh, I'm, I'm still on rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. The city council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Uh, so item two, Z 2305, 1065 North Main Street, request to rezone property from single-family zoning to neighborhood commercial zoning located at 1065 North Main Street.
One second.
Yes. That's the one I read in. I don't, 2305. I'll just take whatever we got that we haven't covered yet.
It was on the, the first one we had up.
Web number.
Yeah, just read in whatever it is.
Okay.
What's next?
We'll go to, we can do North Main. This is the one I presented last time. I can go over it again if you want. Um, it's the Dollar General at North Main, um, and.
Well, I think we've got to have the.
Okay.
Information available on these slides, but I'm, I, we can move around within our agenda here if we're having trouble getting to that case, is what I was.
Right, that, both of those are going to be on the, the main one.
This is long, I think we need to. Austin. I'd like to tell you this is not North. Yeah. Well, I realize a lot of it is this stuff up there, but we're going to have some amendments. And, um, at council, they called out another study committee to revamp the rules from all the suggestions, if I can redo it.
Yep.
If it has problems.
All right.
So I see us being, um, having a short-term, uh.
Approval group.
To study this and bring back to, you know.
Okay. This is 1065 North Main, Z 2305, single-family, uh, RS1 neighborhood commercial, um, and RP 2312, a plat, as well as the alley closure that was approved and conditioned, um, last time at the meeting. If not, uh, it's for the alley closure as well in the middle. I'll explain it again. Uh, so the replat incorporates a portion of the alley. Um, I have an image of that, I will show you. Uh, located a half-block west of North Main, uh, there's a cemetery, uh, to the east, commercial churches, and other developments to the north, and a vacant neighborhood to the south. I mentioned, uh, the zonings. Again, the property, combination of vacant lots, unimproved alley, uh, at a major section of two ha- heavily trafficked streets. Uh, the zoning request would go to commercial neighborhood, uh, which would allow the applicant to consolidate and build a new commercial retail store, Dollar Tree in this case, uh, pending approval of the rezonings and replats. Here's an image of the right-of-way abandonment, again, to incorporate a portion there. Uh, again, the plan is to, there's a fire hydrant located in a portion to be closed. They will locate it per the plans and for the applicant with the one existing home left. You can see there to the west. So he is being accommodated for, uh, to make sure he has all public utilities and services. Um, he, he, the reason it was not, we missed the variance request on the agenda, uh, so it's variance request to no curb and gutter and pavement widths for both streets, um, to maintain them at their current widths. He applied for this prior to, uh, the change. Um, staff is okay with that. City engineer and, uh, planning director are recommending approval and are in support of that. Uh, it's a total of point eight one acres, um, and the alley is 20 by 105 feet. Uh, right-of-way and the replat, they meet the criteria, uh, necessary to grant an approval. Um, 14th of them are fully developed, however, so, I was incorrect, it's the pavement width they sought a variance for. Um, it's below standard. It's in your packets, uh, what they are in Kevin's comments, engineering. Um, he's okay with that. City staff didn't think we would, uh, at any point in the future, uh, gain any, any further additional right-of-way, being a cemetery and the developments around it. Platted in 1951, never, never improved. It's an infill area. Um, utilities are available to all lots in the streets. Um, traffic patterns, uh, for the alley, uh, the use is non-existent. We did send out a notification for all the property owners. Most of them are owned, uh, by a combination of about five to six property owners, however, each one did get a letter per property. Um, it's almost entirely, uh, built out, um, no significant effect, uh, granting the variance. Plat allows for the infill and development in an area that does not have any currently, and is encouraged in seeing a, a slow pattern, but a pattern of redevelopment. This is for approval of the plat. Again, the conditions, uh, required of a plat, recordation of the, um, alley abandonment included with that, uh, and then other conditions that is listed in your plat, typical plat conditions, tax certificates, uh, record plans. I believe they've already started all the project, uh, all these planned submittals, sidewalks and constructions, um, and just some notational comments. Uh, prior to plat recordation, the abandonments must be approved in zoning by city council. The zoning does not have to be approved, but for the development it would. Uh, for the plat, it does not. The proposed abandonment for the plat to be approved must be approved at council. Some views of the property. As you can see, undeveloped. This is the one residence I mentioned. Again, uh, they will accommodate the moving of a fire hydrant to service his facility, or his, his home. This is the rezoning. As you can see here, this is the vision plan. It calls for, uh, commercial. Um, as you can see there, neighborhood commercial works with that, mixes surrounding uses. Um, as I mentioned, actually, it identifies it as an actual neighborhood center because of the, the streets, uh, being high-traffic and designated as a minor arterial and a collector. Again, a new Dollar General store. Uh, staff recommends approval, consistent with the comp plan, um, and then with some con- conditions listed below. Um, staff also agrees a comprehensive, or the proposed rezoning provides a very comprehensive approach for both residential, uh, adjacent to the conf, uh, to the adjacent commercial and not conflicting with any requirements to the LDSO. Uh, the commercial zoning lacks a buffer for the residential, um, and the applicant is, uh, seeking to introduce a change into their area of no development with some new development, hoping to spurn further redevelopment. Again, I've already mentioned this, and staff is recommending approval of all three. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yep, uh, new Dollar Tree store. Is it a Dollar General, a Dollar Tree, a Family Dollar? What, what, what is it?
Uh, a Dollar Tree General. Um, it's all four. I spoke to the applicant, he has four projects in town, so.
Dollar Tree.
This is Dollar Tree in this case.
Okay.
I think.
All right.
So, okay, thank.
Are we rezoning all of the lots or just the northern lot?
I'll sh- I'll get to a better image.
This looks like multiple tracks, is why I'm asking.
Correct. So all of those, it includes a portion of the alley to be abandoned, uh, all in blue you see there.
So all of it's getting rezoned?
Correct.
Or is some of it already neighborhood commercial?
No, it's all residential.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else have questions for Zach? Open up public comment. Uh, I'm going to close public comment and, uh, take a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Six-zero. All right, right-of-way abandonment, 1065. Uh, that's all part of the same case, so I'm going to, I need to read this in. Uh, a request to abandon approximately 20 feet by 105 feet, unimproved valley running north-south, parallel to North Main, and located half a block west of North Main and south of East 14th Street. Uh, and then the replat, uh, RP 2312, a request for approval of an amendment to the Chapman subdivision, lots thirty, 41 through 44, and a replat of the Exal addition, Block Five, located at 1065 North Main Street, two variants. Requests from Chapter 103A2 of the Land Development Subdivision Ordinance to allow the streets to be maintained at their current width. Okay, so we've approved all of that, six-zero.
Correct.
Item three, uh, PD 2305, a new PD out of PD 0703, 2909 South A&amp;M. Request to adopt a new planning development district, PD 2305, by amending a portion of the existing planned development, PD 0703, to allow a mix of uses to include group residential living and associated school, a daycare facility, and a commercial bakery-cafe on 5.438 acres, uh, contain, containing existing buildings out of the overall 7.938 acre tract at 2909 South A&amp;M.
One second. Let me back to here real quick. Should I wait?
No, please go ahead.
Okay. Z 2304, a new PD, uh, 23, uh, 05 out of PD 0703, uh, that's a possibility. That, that's internal numbering, that may change based on, uh, what's decided here. Um, it's a request, uh, to rezone a PD that was approved in 2007 for assisted group living at 2909 South A&amp;M Drive. Uh, the entirety of the property is 7.93 acres. Uh, the proposed change would take the center portion, which includes most of the buildings, except for the very most southern one. Um, and it will, the request is to allow a base zoning to include uses that allow, uh, the mix of a home, specifically, um, teenage, pregnant teenage girls, associated schools, daycares, uh, a bakery and cafe. On the subject, uh, the area with the five a, or with the buildings is 5.43 acres. Uh, the vision plan map calls for neighborhood. Um, again, there are commercial aspects proposed, uh, with this. It's in District Five, Karen Hesse-Smith. Thirty-five, uh, notices were mailed out, none in support, two in opposition. I have a note there, most of these people, uh, didn't want to give their names or addresses, um, but I did receive, and staff did receive, uh, a multitude of calls, but could not, the only, uh, written or verbal opposition with a name given was two. Um, and both, but one of them was inside and both were out, uh, they didn't make it to the map, but, um, one is this property to the south and one out of the 200-foot to the, in the neighborhood to the east. Most of the phone calls I got were the neighbors that did receive phone call, or mailouts, uh, and many of them, I did not get one in support. Their concerns were, uh, as mentioned before, the uses, the traffic, uh, the crime, the asbestos in particular, um, they may be here to speak to it, but I believe it's been, uh, it's under possibly condemnation or border building standards to come into repair. I believe the state's looking at it for asbestos. The applicant's here to speak to it. Um, he is prepared to, uh, address those concerns. Uh, here is a printout of what the applicant provided, a better layout of the schools there with a title survey, site survey of the property, uh, tried to identify there. Uh, the residential building, uh, would be the larger one to the southwest, uh, 7,500 square feet almost, 16 bedrooms, uh, daycare, 80 kids, 17 staff, including, and then there's a, a bakery, a cafe, uh, where they also sell coffee. And then the school is the, uh, building to the south there, adjacent to, uh, South A&amp;M Drive, uh, on the east side of the property there, at 4,300 square feet. Uh, actually, that, that is an approved, uh, concept plan there for the assisted living that is included within the current PD. Option one, leaves a PD, um, uh, with the desired uses, or leave him as a PD with the current uses as assisted living, which would do nothing for the applicant. Um, here is option two. This would pull it out, making it a PD on its own, leaving the rest as its current zoning PD or, uh, back to RS1. The school and the other owner did sign the applications. The school, when we met with him, said they, they're fine, waiting till a later date. They plan to use it for athletics, they just don't have any plans for it at the moment. Uh, and Mr. Jack Gabriel owns the entirety of the property. Um, he still owns the property to the south. Um, he did not mention what, uh, his plans were, other than he didn't, he just was fine with leaving it the way it was. But he was, he did sign the application, uh, for the request. And so option three would just approve it, uh, and changing the entirety of it to allow these uses as well as the assisted living. That could be removed. Uh, it was not requested to be, but that's a condition you certainly can place. Uh, here's some pictures of the property. After speaking with some of the neighbors, I believe the property on the right-hand side there, uh, is where the asbestos is coming out from between the seams. Some additional pictures of the property. You can see the school, uh, the church properties and the proposed athletics where it's fenced. The neighbors to the south, some more school pictures, some site photos. Uh, this was reviewed pursuant, uh, to Section 212 of the LDSO. Uh, the church and school existed since 1960. Uh, a conditional use was approved in 2016 for a new school building. Um, since then, there have been multiple requests. I believe one was a bottling plant for the southern, most southern building, and a multitude of various requests since. Uh, the neighborhood has come out and spoke, uh, from what I can find, fine with these same concerns. Um, staff isn't opposed to some of the potential uses of redevelopment of the vacant buildings. However, uh, I mentioned asbestos, uh, the development, the developability of the site, we've gone through site plan, there were some cons- concerns addressed there with, um, parking, fire department, et cetera. So if this is approved, he will have to go through a site plan process where we can once again address those comments, um, and make sure he has accommodated such. Um, again, staff, uh, based on the plans, uh, planning theory tells you to recommend approval, but based on the conversations with the neighbors in the previous, uh, cases as well as this one, staff is, um, kind of here to let the applicant make his case, let the opponents make their, their case, and. and let the chips fall where they may. We do have his concerns, but planning-wise, it works. It matches the vision plan. The use in two typically seemingly controversial to a neighborhood. However, the neighbors do have concerns. So, we happy to answer any questions?
So the staff is not making a recommendation?
We are not making recommendations.
Okay.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, this came up technically on last month's agenda and was polled at that point in time, from my recollection, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there was a considerable amount of the neighborhood that did come in attendance until the item was polled. Am I wrong?
I think there was quite a few, but not as many as 17 or 18 that we had on this other.
Letters were sent again.
Yeah.
Let's, uh...
There may be some here now.
Let's open it up for public comment. Let the applicant speak if he's here.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Philip Wright. And the group is Chereth Brook. And that comes out of First Kings 17, where Elijah met Ahab and said, "There's gonna be no rain, you're gonna have some famine here." And God said to Elijah, "Go to the Brook Chereth, and I've commanded the ravens to feed you there." And so he was taken care of at the Brook Chereth for a period of time, and then moved on to a widow editor in town. So there's the illustration of what I'm proposing, is a home for teen moms, to provide them that little oasis in the point of trouble. Combination of three portions, business, school, and residence. Business portion is to, bottom line, make money and fund it. So therefore, the biggest issue is going to be starting. And then, once it's operating, the idea is to have the business, for one point, providing the funding to keep it operating. Second point, the girls need a location in which they can learn some actual work skills. And so that is, the issue is mainly the bakery, partially the daycare. Daycare is not for the girls. That will be for the public. And of course, we do have the university, just right off to the east. The ladies that will be in charge, or the teachers in the daycare, will also be able to teach these girls how to take care of a baby. Because I'm not assuming that simply because they're a teenager and they had a baby, they have a clue what to do with them. They have to be trained and know how to take care of the kids. So that's the actual base purpose for the girls of the daycare, is so they can learn to take care of a baby. And then, of course, funding-wise, the daycare will continue to fund. School, designed with homeschool material, so that we can match anything that walks through the door. So if she comes in with 7th grade math, 10th grade English, 3rd grade science, doesn't matter. We can match any grade low, anything. Second, she keeps her baby with her. I've had some go, "Whoa, how do you do that?" That's the point. She has her schoolwork that she has to get done, and she has a baby that needs some care. She has to learn how to do something while taking care of the kid. All the schools I've ever come across that will take a teen mom, have a daycare. And the lesson they teach them is, if you need to go do something, get rid of the kid first. And lastly, is residence, and that is for those that have no social support. So those that have been kicked out, no place to go, that is the location for them. School will be open, but exclusively to teen moms. So that will be the entire population of the school. So they also don't have any males in contention there. So entirely female school with the girls and the babies. So there's the concept.
Okay.
Questions?
Anyone have questions for the applicant? Are you purchasing the property from Mr. Gabriel or leasing it, or?
Will be purchasing, and I put the stipulation that I would not until we got approval for the zoning and the concept.
Okay.
Because it occurred to me, he's had it 15 years.
Right. Are you, are you going to raise the existing improvements or work with the existing structures?
Existing structures.
Okay.
And so you mentioned asbestos, and I already had an asbestos guy out there. The asbestos on the structures is on the soffit and the floor. The testing we had done on the bakery building, so that'd be the upper right on the very corner, showed zero in the air. So we're good asbestos-wise. It does have to be cleared before we can do anything with the building.
Right.
And so, just from the practical sense and the way my brain works, they also need roofs. And so, first building, it would have to be a combination of the asbestos and the roof. Because once they take off all that soffit, everything is open.
Right.
And so, that's the way I'm looking at the project. And my proposal for time-wise is one building at a time per year.
Okay.
So that we start off with those that are producing the money to fund it and get those well-established before we start doing the items that have the high expense.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Flo Loyco. I live at 2790 Harvard, District 5. I've lived there 35 years. I have some pictures for y'all to look at of the existing condition of this. Jack's owned the property for 18 years, has done nothing. He had, he doesn't mow, he doesn't do anything, the roof's falling in. The reason the neighbors did not turn in their application was because we think the property should be condemned. My husband is a lung transplant patient. Asbestos is okay if it's contained, okay? If anybody goes in there and mows on it before it has been abated, it's a $10,000 a day fine. These are, as Brenda Gunner put it last year, "We may not be the nicest neighborhood, but it's my castle." And I think she described it very well, that we do not want to see this off. We, we don't mind a neighborhood that he's describing, but where's he gonna get the funding? He says he's part of, I believe, Chereth Brook or whatever it is. My husband called all those places. They don't subsidize these, they're wanting money themselves. I would like to see that he has proper funding in place before anything is approved. I do not want to see a bakery and a coffee shop over there that's commercial. He can go anywhere in this town and do commercial, not in my neighborhood. So asbestos is my biggest deal, and I think we should condemn the whole place. Because Catholic school looked at this two years ago. It's gonna take $5 million to revamp that school, to make it a school for them.
Right.
And that's not including what Jack's wanting to charge them.
Right.
Jack's using the, the other gym right now for a volley, private volleyball, which is great. They're, they come in at 5:00 in the evening, they leave at 10:00 at night, you don't ever hear a word. Enjoy it. You know, he's making $4,000 a month off that. He can go in and put windows, and that building over there, there's, there's, we don't know who is all vandalizing that. Every week, there's new windows broken out. There is a, a big deal on top of the roof. They painted it last week, they did graffiti. I don't know if they've taken all the copper off, out of last week, off the roof. You know, it's just a place for ignorance right now. But I don't believe, I would like to see, if this gentleman is going to do this, I would like to see how much money he has available before he starts on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this?
Russell Gully. I'm not here representing this, this is kind of a personal thing. I don't know the full scope of everything going on here. You know, God created the heavens and the earth. If this gentleman's trying to do a little bit of God's work, a little bit eternal work here of helping these young moms in need, and we're gonna stand in the way of that? Please don't. You know, I recognize there's a concern about asbestos. Well, if you, if you're gonna demo this and condemn it, that asbestos has to be abated anyway. So let's, you know, no matter what happens, the asbestos needs to be dealt with. So let's give a gentleman an opportunity to, to move forward. This is a small step for a lot of things that have to come together. And I think an approval here allows him to seek and go and plan and work and draw money. But, but please don't get in the way of, of this. You know, a bakery, you know, trying to teach young moms a trade, that's a great thing. If the neighborhood comes and buys goods there, this is not a HEB or a big convenience store. They're, they're not gonna have huge, large amounts of traffic coming through there. Significantly less traffic than probably what an elementary school was for the years. Substantially less than that, and a lot less than what the church brings in, probably on Sunday. So, so please, again, let, let them go and move forward and keep working on and doing something I think that's gonna reach and serve so many, a great need for San Angelo. Thanks.
Thanks, Russell. Anyone else wish to speak?
Asbestos was mentioned, so I'll let you know, there is a company that does remove it. And so, they are state-certified, and they're the ones required to actually do the job.
Yes.
But there's a secondary part to that, which you didn't, I only knew about because they sent me the notice. I would have to hire a second company, and it has to be a separate company. And their entire job is to monitor the air quality in the area while the asbestos abatement is going on.
Yes, sir.
So hopefully that would abate any issue, you know, with actually dealing with the asbestos.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Man, this is, uh, number one, I think the cause is, is wonderful. And I, I hope that we can find a, a place in the community that, that you can open, open the facility and, and provide the assistance that, that's needed. This building is one of the most difficult buildings in our community to deal with. It's an old elementary school. It's, its current owner has tried to make it a lot of different things over the years in my time here. And so it's, I, I don't know how to fix it. It's full of asbestos, and I know that that's a very costly and difficult process to, to just, uh, just singularly remove asbestos and get a structure back to, to work with. It's difficult. So I, I don't, I can't speak to the, to the cost of doing that, but it seems like a substantial undertaking for this site. And I'm, I'm also concerned about the bakery, even though it might be small-scale. You know, we're in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and there's already been some pretty strong opposition to other uses that were commercial in nature, and I don't see why this would be any different. So those are my, my thoughts. Anyone else want to share or make a motion?
I just, Travis stole most of my comments, he was looking at my notes. But I mean, I do applaud the creativity, and it sounds like an ambitious project and a noble cause. I, I agree, I do appreciate the efforts. I agree that it's a very difficult property to deal with. And I just, you know, given the location and what's, what you've gotta do to the property to make it even start to be compliant, and some of the proposed uses, I just don't see how this is a great fit for what we want to put, put out there. I'd love to see it go in somewhere in our community, as Travis said. You know, the other question I have, I guess, is, looking at some of these pictures, pretty disturbing the condition that the property is in. And I just wonder, you know, when, at what point do, you know, does code enforcement come in and, you know, hold the owner accountable for the condition that it's in? It's obviously, I mean, there's a power line on the ground.
There's a hole in the sidewalk.
There's a lot of issues that are, that are, you know, significantly hazardous to anybody walking past it even. It's just a comment, really, more than anything.
I'm kinda on the other side of the coin, is from the aspect of that this would be a beginning. And I think that any time that you have the ability to redo something, and yes, it will be slow, yes, I think there's tremendous amount of issues. But I also know that capital, expenses, revenue will control and monitor this situation. So if it doesn't, if it's not going to work, I think he will know very quickly. But I think from the aspect of, is it worth the effort? I believe that that's up to the undertaker to determine that. You know, will it work? I, I think, I agree with you, Luke. I think it's gonna take a tremendous amount of money, but I don't think we should stand in the way of trying. That's the only opportunity that, you know, the owner's not gonna do anything. So from my standpoint, I think it's worth the effort, and I think the capital system that we have in place will determine if it'll go or not go.
Can I make one comment I didn't make?
Please come up, we're gonna open this up for public comment, let you share your thoughts.
Jack did not, uh, the church called on it and said, "Is this property sold or is it leased?" And he said, "I do not have a lease on it, I have not sold it." And anybody else wanna come forward, put money up, let me know. Jack's deal is the bottom dollar. There's broken windows, he's not gonna do anything.
Right.
But this gentleman here, I applaud him for what he's trying to do, but it's gonna take millions of dollars. Where is that money? I don't want him to get started and two days later go, "Oh, well, I don't, I don't need that for the neighborhood." Let's just condemn the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brittany?
I mean, there's no doubt about that. I love the concept, I really do. I just, the asbestos abatement, the cost on a structure that large is astronomical. The Spanish arms came up for sale not too long ago over off of Beauregard, and the cost of the abatement on that property was so absorbent that you couldn't do anything afterwards. That really does concern me. The other, you know, and this is more just food for thought for the applicant, is, you know, again, I love the mixed use, I do. But if you were remodeling due to cost, obviously, one building at a time, and let's say you start in that daycare and you get that going, there, there's a couple things. There's always gonna be a stigma on this property. No matter what you do to this property, everyone knows that it's had asbestos issues, et cetera. You, so let's say you start the daycare, well, you've got an operating business, and then you decide to go to the next... then you decide to go to the next, uh, maybe the housing, and then you start doing that. What parents are gonna want their kids to be coming to a daycare when there's remodeling of an asbestos building next door? That, you know, as a parent, like, that would really worry me. Um, I just, I'm looking at it just because I do remodeling as a financial thing as well, not just, you know, obviously taking into consideration the neighborhood, but it truly would be probably a better use to buy vacant land and build this and considerably less financial risk. Um, 'cause it, it does concern me that you get halfway into the project, maybe funds tap out, and then that building is sitting in maybe even more questionable, um, state than it is right now. That, that, you know, just some concerns on that aspect.
And my comment, um, I'm probably the only one old enough to, um, have a heart in this. Um, when Travis's school was, um, first opened up, I was in second grade, lived in the neighborhood, and that was the school I went to. In fact, the cafeteria wasn't even built yet. So I have a heart for this area and this school, and it has always bothered me that it has not been taken care of. It bothered me when the school district, um, let it go and didn't take care, in my opinion, business at the time. Um, anyway, that's another story. Um, I like, um, several. Um, I, um, I think it needs to be condemned. I think we have a problem. I think nothing's going to be good there and viable until it is. Um, I love the idea. I love the idea. Um, what a heart this gentleman, um, must have for a need in San Angelo that I know we have, uh, for the teenage, uh, girls, a, a home and someplace to learn a business, someplace to go to school and finish their education. What a concept. Um, but I don't know that this is the correct area for that. Um, as much as my heart would want it to be viable again in the future, I just don't see causing, uh, more issues there than has already been. And part of that is that it hasn't been taken care of.
All right. We're gonna open it up for Mr. Gully here. Come on up.
Thank you, Russell Gully. Um, those buildings, a majority of those buildings are structural concrete buildings. So yes, they do have some asbestos in them. You, you know, to go in and condemn those and remove those, anytime you're getting, you know, if those were just some old wood frame buildings, run them over and go, go, they're gone. You know, as concrete buildings, i- it's gonna take a substantial undertaking to even just, you know, one, you gotta do the asbestos abatement period.
Regardless of what you do.
No matter what you do, it has to occur. And so then you get the asbestos out, and now you have a, a structural, a very solid structural building that's better made than what being built today, I, I, I really dare to say. So, you know, but please don't get in the way, just let, let someone take a chance. And Trinidad, thank you for your comments. Let industry, let, let it, just don't kill it here. This is the first step. And, and, you know, if you wanna let it sit and Jack Gabriel's, you know, who's gonna buy it? People have bought it, looked at it. You have someone here willing to, and I, you know, we're trying to help him. We've done a little bit of just helping him get there to here. Um, but, but there again, I, I have nothing personal to gain out of this, other than I, I think this is good eternal work that, that could, would improve a neighborhood. Just let the buildings decay, or, or let's get some activity there and improve that. And that's gonna move away all of this stuff that's happening there bad, so thanks.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna close public comment. And, uh, I, I think, I think my biggest problem, while there is, this property is difficult to deal with, is that there's a retail component. There's a, a significant commercial component to this concept, to this proposal. Uh, and yes, there's a, a large church and school across the street, but it's in the middle of a neighborhood. And, um, that seems to have been the overwhelming objection from, from prior proposed uses that went to the city council. Um, and that's, that's my, that's my number one hurdle mentally on this idea is the commercial nature of it in this location. Um, so I, I think, I think we're at the point where we could take a motion if someone wants to make it.
I'll take a shot at it. I, I make a motion to approve, and I make a motion that we let, uh, you know, the industry decide if this is going to work or not, recognizing that it's gonna require, uh, prior comments of just a tremendous amount of work. I think it's, uh, something that the city needs, and I believe that it's got an opportunity. So I make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Uh, okay, we do not have a second, so the motion did not carry. Would someone else like to make a motion?
I'd move to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. We do not have a second.
I was just gonna say, with this being a PD, I mean, you could modify kind of the conditions, take out portions or, or whatnot.
I was gonna ask, could you make a motion, um, limiting the commercial nature?
Uh, so what is, what's the current PD allowing? Did you say a?
Assisted living.
Assisted living?
With a harsh face.
Okay.
And there was an amendment later to allow the gymnastics facility in the gym, which has not been revoked, so that could be a use as well.
Okay.
Creational.
Anyone wanna take a stab at this? Make a motion?
A question. With that conditional use on the gym, uh, what could else, what else would be applicable to be in that building besides a gym?
It, it specifically says the operation of a gymnastics academy. Uh, property shall not be used for any retail sales.
Okay.
Um, except to students, you know, gymnastic leotards, that sort of thing. Um, office, office space for the gymnastics center, but no other kinds of office. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Can that be changed? That, that, uh, conditional use?
Yeah, well, it's actually, it was not a conditional use.
Oh.
It was an amendment to the plan development. But yes, with this plan development, you are basically, if you approve something, it's replacing what's there. Well, it's amending, but you could remove the assisted living, you could remove the gymnastics, you could add something else beyond this. It, it's really at your discretion, um, w- within the limits of what was advertised. You couldn't add an industrial use, for example.
Yeah.
Uh, but you, yes, you could remove the gymnastics or assisted living.
Can I just let y'all know something?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I'll open it up for, if you wanna come up, Brett, quick.
Yes, the gym is separate, and it is being used now, not for gymnastics, gymnastics don't, volleyball is in there.
But it's, but it's all part of the same development.
No, it, yeah, but it's separate.
It's on the southern end.
Yeah, it's a separate metals building.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a separate.
All right. Waiting on a motion.
I'll, I'll move, um, I'll move to approve without the allowance of a, um, bakery, cafe, commercial type retail use.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the PD, uh, to allow for a group residential living, associated school, and daycare facility, uh, but not the commercial bakery or cafe that was proposed on this concept plan. Uh, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So five zero. Okay. I think we got two more.
I think it applies to you.
All right, so subdivision plats. The planning commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the city council. RP 2314, first replat in blocks 39 and 40, miles addition. Request for approval of first replat, lots 39, 40 miles addition being 3.387 acres. And variance request from chapter 10382 of the land development subdivision ordinance to allow streets with no curb and gutter and to allow 4th Street to remain at a substandard width located between 4th and 5th Streets and between Oaks and Pecan Streets.
Hold on a second. You ready, John?
Yeah.
It's only a couple, so you wanna go one more?
Oh, is it yours?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it? Yeah.
Yep, we're good.
Okay. Okay, Zach Rainbow, Planning and Development Services. This is a replat 2314 of the miles addition, blocks 39 and 40. If you remember back a couple months, there was an alleyway that was abandoned. Uh, this is a, the next step in, uh, the alleyway was approved to be abandoned. This is to consolidate it into the applicant's property. Um, as you can see, it's zoned, light manufacturing surround, uh, the property is vacant. I'll get to an aerial here. Uh, applicant owns, owns most surrounding properties with the state of Texas owning portions. I believe there's some ownership disputes, uh, but that's being worked out. Um, there is potential in this area. As you can see, it's CBD to the south. Uh, there's an encroachment to the CBD. This is just, uh, or to the north of here, actually. Um, property's vacant, surrounded by, uh, the railroad spur there to the north. Um, multiple, uh, industrial and warehousing type uses. However, staff has received, uh, multiple requests for retail type uses, uh, and encroachments or expansion of the CBD. Again, nothing in, nothing solid, just multiple requests. Uh, so this area is likely to redevelop, um, potentially redevelop. They are asking for, uh, variances to all three streets. Uh, the street north forth, uh, is owned by the state of Texas. City does not have, uh, the ability to grant, uh, variances, so they're asking to leave the street the way it is. Uh, based on the applicant's information, it is two feet in certain portions, which is 24 feet. It is two feet below the bare minimum, um, that's allowed with the most recent changes by city council. Um, so therefore, uh, they're asking for variances to keep the streets the way they are. The other three north-south streets, um, go back here, um, are, they do not have curb and gutter. They're asking for variances to that. However, the paving width, they do exceed the minimums required. Uh, staff is in support of those variance requests. Staff is not in support of the, uh, the 4th Street variance request. Um, maintaining streets above, or the intent of city council was to maintain them at a certain, uh, standard, the bare minimum being 26 feet. Uh, again, as mentioned, uh, there are portions of 4th that are substandard. Um, and so with the recent changes, it would be in direct, uh, going against directly what they approved. Um, so that's the reason staff is recommending denial, uh, on that variance. Here's conditions, uh, unique to the property. Um, they meet the minimum widths, as I said, on the north, uh, north-south streets. Again, 4th Street, uh, appears to be part of the railroad owned by the Texas Department of Transportation. However, is substandard in certain areas. Uh, due to the potential of redevelopment, um, the potential of traffic, uh, with leaving it substandard, um, and causing impact to the area, it could be substantial, um, due to increased traffic and use, uh, in the area. Um, they don't meet, again, the city standards, um, and staff is recommending denial based on the factors. I kinda briefly went over them, uh, more briefly so here, but in depth in your packet. So again, as mentioned, uh, staff is recommending approval of the final plat to incorporate the alleyway. Uh, the owner does own all land adjacent to the alleys, uh, north and south lots, uh, subject to six conditions of approval as listed below. Tax certificate, uh, just some notational marks. Uh, the improved, uh, Magdalene and Pecan, uh, notes to improve the other streets which they've asked for variances for. Uh, provide a drainage study and make required improvements. And extend water service to all lots or submit a financial guarantee, uh, to complete with improvements. Uh, so essentially defer until such time as development. Uh, staff is in support of that, uh, deferring any improvements, extension of water and sewer road if required, uh, until such time as development. And so staff is recommending approval, uh, of the plat, uh, and the three variances, and recommending denial on the variance request along 4th Street. Be happy answering questions.
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we'll open it up for public comment.
Good afternoon, Russell with SKG. Um, we really have no opposition, if you will, to the 4th Street paving. I guess we're just having to widen it. And a portion of the eastern part of 4th Street, or what we call in uses 4th Street, I guess technically, from my understanding, is owned by the Texas DOT or state of Texas, Texas Pacifico, however that arrangement works out. So we were somewhat unsure as to even our ability to go onto state property and make improvements. Um, if, if we can get that worked out and that's all approved by the state, then, then we'd have no opposition to that. But if in our quest to, I guess we probably need to get approval from the state to that, if they say no, I guess, is there some way, or would we have to come back to the city? Or, or could that just kind of be the understood caveat that if, for some unknown reason, state of Texas says no, then stay off of our property, then, then what do we do? So I, you know, we're fine to make the improvements so long as we can and have the authority to make the improvements. We can't go improve since it's not truly city right of way. Maybe by some point, the city, city could get it dedicated to the city from Texas DOT. Um, but, but, but other than that, we're happy to, and, and, and thanks to Zach and planning for deferring all of these improvements, we're, don't have really an immediate need for this. This is more of cleaning up some legal descriptions for Mr. Fluger so that, that the property, 'cause it's parts of, gonna be some abandoned alley and miscellaneous lots. So this is really primarily at this point, just cleaning up the, the legal descriptions and, and getting those alley abandonments that we had requested formalized. This was one of those conditions of approval for the alley abandonment was to come in with plat. And then, then our intent is to, there's this lot 22 on the eastern portion of that, that's a drainage way. Um, that'll be beaded to, our intent is to deed that to the city of San Angelo. It's just a very substantial drainage structure through there of really no value to, to Mr. Fluger on this. So, you know, once, once we get this done, then that can formally be handed over to the city. There, be happy to answer any other questions.
I, I'd be happy to, I think, say that staff would support a revision to the condition to state something like, um, if that is in fact owned by Texas DOT and they, um, deny the ability to. to make improvements on that property because of their ownership, then at that point, we would support them not making the improvements.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this?
I guess Mr. Fluger is going to come up and.
He's been here long enough.
Lee Fluger, single member district five, I believe. And I just want to thank y'all for staying around and doing this. I, as you know, I've been on a lot of committees, some of them with you. And, and I know this is a yeoman's chore, and you'd be, need to be commended for what you've done today. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Fluger. All right. Anyone else? I'm going to close public comment and take a feedback or a motion.
I'll see if I get this right. A motion to approve as presented with the addition of the verbiage that John had mentioned in regards to if the applicant is not able to come to an agreement with Texas DOT, that they are able to move forward with the project without the improvement. I don't know if that was right or not.
A second.
Thanks.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero.
Who was this?
All right. CU 2329, 2406 North Bryant. Request for approval of conditional use to allow retail sales and service uses in the heavy commercial zoning district. 2406 North Bryant.
Okay, Zach Rainbow, Planning and Development Services. As you mentioned, this is 2329, a conditional use to locate retail sales and service in heavy commercial. They want to do a semi-small shopping center with multiuses such as retail, restaurants possibly, et cetera. It's on North Bryant, 2406, surrounded by all warehousing, commercial and industrial uses, with the exception of the mobile home park. You can see there subdivision to the north, portions of which are zoned single family. The rest is actually zoned, light manufacturing. It did receive, it's there with a legal nonconforming, legal nonconformity. Streets built prior with the plating in this area that was just approved last month for the entirety of the lot. I believe it's almost an acre. Did notify and received none in opposition or in favor. Here's the zonings. Again, heavy commercial, future land use calls for commercial. The intent of the conditional use is for expediting this request in order to get construction going. They've finished the plat. Next step would be site plan. They've already done their consultation. It looks like a good development here. Here's the plat that was approved last month. This was a, an idea of the concept plan that was submitted previously. As you can see, it's pretty much a standard strip center with an anchor store to the rear there. Again, the intent is to allow retail and commercial and restaurant uses to potential tenants. Sidewalks are being built, I believe, as part of a Texas DOT project. Here's some pictures of looking down Bryant. And then the mobile home is actually to, on the right-hand side there. They're hard to see. They're covered by trees. One of the conditions of approval is, and requirements of the ordinance is screening residential uses. So requirement along the north side. Again, some more views along North Bryant. You can see the sidewalks there being constructed. This is an area, we see a lot of new development. It's pretty much prime and ready to go. Wide streets, pavements, infrastructure, sidewalks, et cetera. Some more reviews, the subdivision, or the surrounding area along Bryant. It matches the area, commercial uses mainly along Bryant, compatible with the surrounding uses, the mobile home subdivision to the north. However, it is zoned with a light manufacturing. So if whoever go away, pretty intensive use go in there. This is small scale and relative to where it is. The only slight concern was the MH neighborhood, hence the reason for the condition that was mentioned here on number three, privacy fence up to, or six feet or higher along the northern property there, screening it from residential. Any lights or glare shielded to prevent any flooding. And staff is recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment.
Good afternoon at this point. My name is Carter Feldhoff from Lubbock on behalf of the applicant, or I am the applicant, and I'd like to answer any questions y'all have about this proposed development.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? No? Think it looks good. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close public comment and I guess take a motion or thoughts.
To approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dice, again, by stating their names, address, single mover district. I'm going to open it up for public comment. I'm going to close public comment and see what else is on here. Director's report, proposed annexation of property along Foster Road and Loop 306.
We're trying to clean out this one.
Okay.
It is 26.422 acres. They are proposing.
This is 26.86 acres. They are proposing to annex in the property that is in the teal color. City limits is at that point, and there is commercial right along that access road. They are proposing to do something in that same neighborhood. The applicant had submitted this a short time ago, and we've pulled everything together and are proposing to have the city council accept the petition on, in July, and then move forward with the annexation ordinance in September and October.
Is there, is there adequate sewer?
Not yet. When the city brings that made in the sewer line, it comes out.
Okay.
It's kind of disfigured.
Okay.
And it's right along Foster Road, so.
Yep.
Straight end. It's a good annexation.
I agree. It's basically in the middle of town at this point.
Yes, it is.
Surrounded.
And this is listed on the director's report because you all don't actually hear annexations, but lately we've been bringing them to you, just so you're aware of.
Yeah.
Of what's going on.
Appreciate you doing it. Okay.
And nothing else.
Anything else on director's report?
Nothing else for director's report.
So. Future meeting and agenda. The next regular meeting of the planning commission scheduled to begin at 9:00 AM Monday, July 17th. East Mezzanine, 72 West College Hill, or excuse me, West College Avenue, San Angelo. Adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. It's 112. Yeah, I think that's a record.
Yeah.
Worst meeting.